Okay. Last one.
That's what I think is, that was the impression I was.
Right now is that I feel like they're saying like there are so many things we have to do. So everything becomes a standalone. Like if I have to teach.
Oh, you've got it right.
Right. That's what I'm fearing.
They're all about IB this month.
Yes. Oh, no. That should, I mean, so that's good to know because that has to be addressed now. We need to get that covered up.
She was like, please, you know, I'm like, oh, I.
And I had the same.
I'd like to call the Purdy Public Schools District 150 Board of Education meeting for October 14th, 2014 to order. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Coy.
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Cosner.
Here.
Mr. Crawford.
Here.
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 Here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under awards and recognition, did you want to mention?
We want to recognize Roland Acres Middle School. Once again, they're holding, hosting our parent university that's scheduled for this Thursday evening. Dinner starts at 5:30 with informational session and then the classes start at 6:00. Tonight, board members at your station, the Career, Paxton Patterson Career Exploration classes donated some little treats or created some treats for you. There's a muffin and a peanut butter bar, but they actually did this in their Growing Up Ready Lab. So, Science in the Kitchen, if I'm not mistaken, is the title of.
Yes, probably, or either it could be the nutrition.
Or the nutrition. And also, this is National School Lunch Week, and on Friday, the U.S. Department of Agriculture will actually be at Roland Acres, recognizing Roland Acres and our entire district for our efforts around finding creative strategies to follow the school lunch program. We're going to also be recognized for the Community Eligibility Provision Program that we're participating in, and that's where 26 of our 27 schools provide free breakfast and free lunch to every student in their school. And so they're coming out to actually to recognize District 150 on this Friday, and so they'll be at Roland Acres eating lunch. Also on Fridays at Roland Acres is Smoothie Day, and so students actually make smoothies using, can't think of the name of that blender that they use. It's one of those nice ones, though. What, Vitamix? They use Vitamix to create their smoothies with fruits and vegetables. They also have a garden. If you recall, at the last board meeting, they had things that you stationed from their garden. So very excited about the efforts and the work at Roland Acres. Once again, they decorated the board meeting, but please join us at Parent University on Thursday night.
Thank you. Are there any announcements by board members? Okay, let's get into our district presentations. We're going to start out with Charter Oak and Treewind IB application. Dr. Lathan?
Yes. Excited if we can let the screen down. We're excited tonight. On October 1st, Treewind and Charter Oak submitted their IB applications, and we actually had them scheduled for the September 29th board meeting, but our parent parental duties call come first, and so one of our staff members had to be participate in the family event. This is a requirement of the application process that the staff members present to the school board president, and also we included the school board vice president and the superintendent. They present their application to us. We feel in the spirit of transparency, it's important for all board members to understand the work that went into the submission of this application. Very proud at the progress that both Treewind and Charter Oak have made as it relates to the primary years program. So very excited tonight to have staff here. If you want to, if you would introduce yourselves, please, and then we'll go into your presentation.
Okay. My name is Kathy Rodriguez, and I'm here from Charter Oak Primary School. I am the IB coordinator there.
And my name is Stacy Cryan. I'm the IB coordinator at Treewind K-8 School. Good evening, Dr. Lathan, and ladies and gentlemen of the school board. We are here today to present our IB journey.
Okay. So what you're looking at right now is both of our mission statements from both of our schools, and our mission statements were developed once we started getting into the IB process, and we tried to align our missions with the IB philosophy. Charter Oak's mission is dedicated to providing a solid foundation for lifelong educational and social success to a diverse population of learners.
And Treewind's mission is that we aim to develop lifelong learners that are knowledgeable, skilled, compassionate, principled, and action-oriented. Through a rigorous program of inquiry, Treewind students will become internationally-minded individuals that help create a better world.
And so just as Dr. Lathan was saying, our goal during the initial meeting that we had was really just to review our process that we've been through, to demonstrate that we were ready to become an authorized school and to receive approval in order to do that, to submit.
As IB coordinators, we have many duties throughout our school to prepare our staff for IB authorization.
And so basically, our responsibility has been to really just facilitate the movement, the progression of the program, to get our schools ready for that verification visit when they come in the spring. We also have been, part of our duties have been to identify needs in the school to help make that progression happen. So when we identify a need for possibly professional development, we look out into the community and seek that. We line that up and get that to the staff. Sometimes it's just needing some community involvement, so we've been key in reaching out to the community for guest speakers or anything that we need as far as materials or things like that that community members can help with. Also, we have played a key role in the curriculum development and implementation.
Our first step, being an IB coordinator, was in, began in 2011, and we submitted our application for candidacy, and we worked throughout that school year and submitted that in April. To do that, we had to complete a feasibility study for our school to ensure that all of the components of IB align with the direction of District 150 and its curriculum and the Common Core. Throughout the year, we prepared our staff for the candidate phase process by teaching them some of the IB requirements before we applied.
And so currently, we find ourselves in our candidacy phase. The decision for our granted candidacy was June of 2012. So from then until the current time, we've been in this phase. We've had our consultants visit the buildings. We've had continued trainings. We are implementing the PYP, or the Primary Years Program, and we applied for authorization by October 1st of this year, so that just happened recently, and we are expecting a verification visit the spring of 2015. So as I said, we're expecting that after the verification visit in the spring, we'll find out that we are authorized schools in the summer of 2015. And, you know, we feel like even though we'll be authorized, our work is really just beginning. There's just so much involved, once we've started this process, in maintaining that, in continuing our professional development in the IB, and so we're looking forward to continuing.
So then, the exhibition which happens in 2018 after we're authorized is our, my fifth grade students and Charter Oak's fourth grade students. In that year, students then will take one of our unit planners, which each grade level has six, and they will write their own. And then there will be a big exhibition at each of our schools where community will be invited, the school board, of course, parents, and you'll come in and really see the work that they've put in from kindergarten through the fifth grade. And also, once we're authorized, they will give us things that they would like to see when they come back in five years to do a reeval of our program to make sure we're keeping up with all the guidelines of the IB.
So here are some key differences that you might note if you visit our school as opposed to a traditional District 150 school. These are differences that we're really excited about. An expectation of the IB is that we have a media specialist as well as a Spanish teacher. We also have carefully designed and planned a program of inquiry, and so our entire staff has been a part of this, developing this program. And this program of inquiry, we'll talk about when we see the picture a little bit later, but it involves six themes per grade level that we cover throughout the year. And then, these are transdisciplinary themes. So to us, that means that we may be teaching reading and social studies at the same time, and students wouldn't necessarily know that we've switched from one to the other. Same with, for example, math and science. So it's just a great model that we're doing right now that we're very excited about. Another thing that we have that allows us the time to plan and implement this type of program are daily PLC times. That's professional learning community, where our grade level teachers can meet daily and plan and implement and prepare these units of inquiry.
Another key difference in the IB is that it is globally-minded, and you will see that it looks different from Treewind to Charter Oak. Globally-minded, at Treewind is very community-based for our students to really understand what is out in their community. A lot of them don't travel past a two or three block radius of where they live in their school. We have all students that speak English. Where if you go to Charter Oak, you have many languages being spoken in the homes. Students' parents and or grandparents have come from around the world. So it looks a little bit different, but it's all within the realm of IB. We also have, each one of our SIP days is devoted to PYP. Our teachers meet together. They meet with the encore teachers to really make sure that those units of, the unit planners are fully developed and hitting our students in every area of, of every subject. In the eyes of IB, art is just as important as reading, is just as important as science, PE, and they're all on a level playing field, and they want to see those students being enquirers in every area. And then we also have student portfolios, which maybe look a little different. They stay with the student. Because of our exhibition in fifth grade, they follow them from kindergarten to fifth grade, and those students can reflect on their work, and their exhibition can actually reflect on something maybe they studied in kindergarten that they really wanted to Impact in our schools, what we've seen. Students get to make some really big decisions in their learning. A teacher could really have it planned out for a day on a topic that they wanted to cover, but a student could ask a question that is kind of an aha, and the next day, the class is taking off in a different direction. The overall theme, for example, in fourth grade right now is rights and responsibilities. One class covers it using government, another class is covering it using bullying in the classroom. Are they still covering their overall theme? Yes, but the class kind of has guided that teacher where to take that instruction, which has been really nice. More engagement of our encore teachers, being able to meet with them regularly and have PE be involved in every single grade level and reinforcing what's happening in our classrooms has been really huge. And we also have a lot more community coming into our building, more community that wants to come in and just making a huge impact in both of our schools.
Another impact that we see is that teachers are just passionate about what they're teaching right now. The units that they've developed, they have ownership of those because they've so carefully designed those as a team. So we see that they're excited about it, and it's just contagious to the students. Also, we have school-wide common language. So there's some language that came with the IB, but the great thing is, it's, a lot of it is kind of character education, and that goes beautifully with our PBIS that we're already doing. So when we're speaking to students, we might be saying words like, you know, I see that you're standing so principled in the hallway, principled would be one of the key words that came with the IB program. But all the same, we're giving that positive reinforcement, and that's just what we do with PBIS. So they go together very nicely.
And speaking to that common language, at my school, which is a K-8 building, PYP is a K-5 program, but we use our learner profile language through our K-8 curriculum. Every teacher in the school uses it because it's common language between PYP and MYP. And our ultimate goal after we're authorized at Treewind at K-5 is then to do authorization for MYP 6, 7, and 8. So we already have those students hearing that language and using it in the building.
Okay, so what you're looking at right here is a picture of something that's on the walls at Charter Oak Primary School. If you were to walk in to the left of the office, you would see this POI, or Program of Inquiry. And so this is the, just kind of laid out as a visual model of what our school is doing this year and will continue to do each year. We have some vertical planning that's done, so you can see like kindergarten has six units across, same with all the other grades following. But the neat thing about the planning that we did is that after lining everything up with the standards, Common Core standards, making sure that everything was hit vertically, we were also able to look at the flow horizontally. So for the time a student starts at our schools in kindergarten until the time they finish, they will have met all the standards and a wide range of very in-depth topics. Okay, let's take a look at the next.
The next picture, these are some of our learner profile posters that are posted, these are at Treewind. The top row, I did an activity with our teachers, and they had to design each learner profile on how Treewind staff is living our learner profile. So then this was up when the kids came into school. And now what we've done is we're doing a word a week. We're on our eighth learner profile. In the bottom picture where it says principled, teachers then take that word and their class makes a new poster to hang in their classroom so that they're not just these printed-off posters that you get from the internet. The students have ownership in those. And then the other picture is an activity one of our teachers did using one, the first learner profile we did, which was inquire using the book Verdi.
Okay, these are essential agreements, which is something that the IB taught us about, although we've been doing it probably without even realizing for many years. These are kind of like classroom rules, but in this case, the student actually, the students in the class help develop these rules. So initially, when they begin the year, they're asked, what are some things that we think we could do to make this a great place to learn, to make our classroom a great, safe place to be? And the kids will actually come up with rules that they think would make this a great learning environment. And when it's finished and the teacher has put them up there, the students actually sign in agreement that that's what they want to do to make it a great learning place. And the essential agreements, we found that every training that we go to at IB, that's how the trainings actually start for the staff as well. So I know both of our staffs have developed essential agreements as well. For our PLC time would be a good example of when, you know, we want to agree to starting on time and listening to others' ideas and things like that. So it's been really key and a really neat change in our schools.
And our PBIS, that's okay, our PBIS matrix also changed at Treewind, so we call it our essential agreements matrix instead of a behavior matrix so that there's common language throughout all components of the student's day. The next is some pictures of students at both of our schools in, working diligently during one of their unit planners. You can see students using marshmallows and spaghetti, and they're trying to construct the strongest bridge, working together, talking about it. You have students on the top right at Charter Oak doing a unit in movement in PE. So across all of the curriculums, students are working together. You don't just see the teacher up in the front of the room talking all day long.
This is one of our teachers' bulletin boards, and what I just wanted to point out here is that when you come into our classrooms, it should be visible when you're there, what unit they're working on and what the topic is and the inquiry is about. And so what you're seeing is her way of just putting up components to the unit. That's a good reminder for her as she's teaching through the unit and a good reminder for the students. And any sticky note you see up there is the student giving some feedback or input or questions that they have. So it's very interactive.
And this picture is a couple of displays throughout our school. The one on the left is kindergarten. They were doing similarities and differences. So they made monsters, and then they had a classroom discussion about how they were alike and how they were different. And on the other side is a first grade teacher's I wonder board. So when a student has a great question that they've asked or just a question they want answered, they can write on that post-it and put it under their picture, and they can have some classroom discussion about it. And that's really important because in our unit planners, when they're finished teaching, the teachers also reflect, and they put down good student questions that they heard, notes of things to remember they want to try next year, or things that they didn't maybe work well for the year, so that they have a reflection. So when they teach this planner the next year, it's always a working document, and it can be tweaked and updated and changed out a little bit.
Okay. What you're seeing here is one of our teams in a PLC time, our professional learning community, and this was a space designated for this so that we can meet daily, and it's just been a huge benefit to being able to implement this program, and the time is really invaluable, being able to do that together. And this is a, an actual video. I'm not sure that we have ability to show it to you, but Spanish in action gives it away.
Quick time not available.
Okay. All right. Well, you would see that they are moving and counting.
We've seen it so many times.
So movement and Spanish, and they're counting their movements in Spanish, so very, very good.
And this is just the application review on October 1st, actually September 30th, really. We hit submit because we wanted to make sure it was in and there were no glitches. Our application for authorization, which is, we took our application for candidacy, which we submitted in 2012, actually, towards the end of that school year, and we took that and we updated what we've done since then to make our school IB ready. It's kind of the same application process that MYP also went through, and now they're both, thank goodness, authorized in IB schools. And then that's what IB is going to use to, that's okay, to review our school prior to coming in April. They're going to read that cover to cover, ask us for a couple other documents, and then they'll be ready to do our visit in the spring.
Okay. And also on the application that we had to turn in, they really wanted to make sure that this was an all-inclusive program, so I'd like to point that out to you, too. This is not a program that students would have to ever, you know, have a lottery to get into, or, you know, an exclusive program for only certain students or families. This is open to anyone who comes into Treewind or Charter Oak, and that's a really neat aspect of it. Also, on the application we submitted, there were policies that we had to develop as a staff, and one of them was a language policy, one of them was the assessment policy. So once again, as a staff on one of our SIP days that were, were able to do a lot of our IB work as well, we were able to develop a policy that we all could agree to that summed up both of our schools and what our needs were, and we submitted those as well. A difference in our language policies, as Stacy had said earlier, there are some differences with languages spoken at Charter Oak, and so we had to add for our school a language B policy where we support the mother tongue language, which is very important to IB. So we have actual resources that we've invested in that students who speak another language in their home can come into our library and find that material in their language to, just for enjoyment, to be able to read. So that's been a neat part of growing in this program. Also, let's see, did you want to go to the next? Okay. We also had to go ahead and say that by the time they come, we will have implemented and reflected on all of our units, which will be done by the time they come. And we also needed to show evidence that we have developed this transdisciplinary model. So evidence that comes from times that we've spent as an entire staff where our PE teachers are planning with the kindergarten team, or music is planning with, you know, our fourth grade team. So all of those things had to be in place as well, and that was all part of the application process. So to close out, Charter Oak, we came up, each school came up with a slogan, and ours this year is "Growing Leaders for the Future," and you can see our oak tree for Charter Oak up there.
And ours is "Leaving Our Prints on the World." And like I told Dr. Lathan, we'll put a paw print on anything at Charter Oak, or right, Treewind, so.
Charter Oak too, being the Bobcats. So are there any questions?
Yes, yeah, I had one or two. First of all, how many different languages are spoken at Charter Oak?
Last count, there were 33, but that was last year in about March. We were doing a celebration, and we just needed to kind of take a look at what we have going on, so. Now this year, it could be different because we've had, you know, some in and out, but yeah.
Okay, and, excuse me, please. You talked about additional community involvement at Treewind. Could you give a little more detail about what that looks like?
We have Mrs. Rumba, who is our in-school resource, I'm trying to think of her, coordinator, and she is amazing. If a teacher can dream it, she tries to get it for the teachers. We've had cultural food fairs. We've had teachers that just want to go out into the community and do a field trip somewhere. We really tried to get to Washington last year because we had a huge weather planner, and the tornado actually affected one of our teachers. And by the time it all worked out, it just, it was snow-covered and they couldn't get over there. But Mrs. Rumba is a godsend to our building. She, if a teacher wants it, she will move heaven and earth if she can to try to get it for them, so.
And then one last question. Are there any other school districts in downstate Illinois that have a primary years program in IB?
I know of an exclusive one for, it's like a gifted school, and that is in the Champaign-Urbana area.
So that would be the only other one?
I was only thinking possibly Springfield, if I remember, is the other one. That's it.
So, okay.
Even at the middle and high school, it's very limited below Chicago, isn't it?
Yes, very limited.
Yeah. Okay, well, that was my point. Thank you.
Can you talk about the integration of Common Core and IB, or do you feel, or do teachers feel that we've asked them to do something else in addition to the expectations around Common Core?
We start with Common Core because it's in our pacing guides, it's in our four-quarter plans, and that's what we bring to the table, and we look to see where that fits in those transdisciplinary themes, the six themes. There's a definition under each theme, and some of them are broken up into four or five parts. So it's our goal as a staff to cover each of those parts, not to be covered twice. You have to cover that whole definition. So we're not forcing it into one unit. You have six choices, and I've Googled every unit planner I can find for IB, and they fit, everything fits somewhere. So some units are very heavily science-based, some units are very heavily math-based, but we're not sitting there covering the rainforest in science and then making math rainforest math and making reading rainforest reading. You can bring reading into the rainforest very easily with the books that you read. Maybe math doesn't fit into that unit planner. But if you bring in patterning, you can pattern in science, you can pattern in reading, you can pattern in math. So it's, we start with the Common Core and our pacing guides and everything we're given, and we, how does that work with our unit planners? Then we figure it out together.
Good evening. The teachers, because of our PLC time and the time that the district has allowed us to dedicate during our SIP days, it's not one more thing to do. So what we're asking them to accomplish, we're actually giving them as much time as feasibly possible in order to accomplish those goals.
IB coordinators and then the interventionists, how do you work together? Because this is unique for our four IB, two pre-authorization schools and our authorized IB schools. So how do you work together?
We don't make a move without the other. I mean, we are, our offices are next door to each other. She went to writing training last week, and we're already, how does this fit into planners? She had a teacher go with her. I had an aha moment. It fits perfectly with IB. I can't wait to tell the teachers. Now we're figuring out how to present that. with IB. I can't wait to tell the teachers. Now we're figuring out how to present that out to our staff.
Let me ask you a different way, because this is going to come up. So, as we're looking at our finances, and this will be a question that will come up sooner rather than later, how do we justify keeping an interventionist and IB coordinator in those four schools?
I think, and what our experience-
And what data do we use to justify that?
Well, I have to think about the data for a second. But, but just knowing the different roles that we fulfill and the different supports that we give, it really is, while we work very closely together, because we are, we have the same mission, school mission, but we fulfill different needs for the staff. So where I'm more concerned with making sure the program is being implemented with integrity and carrying that out so that we get that authorization and continue to get our, you know, reauthorized as they come and reevaluate, hers is really, you know, she has a real keen focus on the data in the school, so that we can work together and get our units in line with what our needs are and our interventions in line with what our needs are. So we both support, but it's, we're covering two different areas and we're great together, but we have a lot of things to cover. So, anything else you want?
Mr. Crawford?
How does the PYP program aim to prepare the student who chooses to IB in high school?
That's great.
Well, the high school program is an application-based program.
And this one, anybody can participate?
Yes. Anybody in PYP or NYPD also is open to any students. So to me, if you have that continuation of a program, which is our ultimate goal, and once Charter Oak is authorized, it goes Charter Oak to Mark Bills, I think our diploma program can only increase because you're going to have that common language, because the learner profiles are common throughout. And they're going to know what they've had with IB in primary and in middle. And that's just going to increase our student, hopefully, enrollment in the DP program, too.
So the language goals and methods of IB continue through the high school?
Parts of it do, yes. There's some things that are, our transdisciplinary themes are a little different, but they get a little more subject-based in NYPD because primary self-contained, but, yeah.
In addition to that, I think the model that, you know, the teaching and learning model that we're using, the inquiry-based model, is something that they'll need to be very comfortable with and fluent with in the DP program, as well as the rigor of the units that we're developing. They'll need that, you know, rigor to gain them what they need for the DP. And also, I was talking with Bradley, their whole science department is going to an inquiry-based model. So I, while this is great for the DP, and, you know, it's definitely going to prepare them for that, I see even into the college, you know, spectrum, they're trying to go more inquiry-based. So they will be well-prepared for that coming out of our, our schools.
Reverend Butler?
Yes, Dr. Lathan. How did you go about choosing these particular schools to participate? When we went, and actually, Renee can answer that more so. We have Mrs. Akoski, who just joined us in July. But when, 2011, that was a part of the interview process, you want to talk about that in our discussion, those one-on-one meetings with every principal in the district at the time, as it related to, we were making changes. Where do you see yourself? What would you like to do? What would you not want to do, if you had to be persuaded? Are you ready to implement a program such as, we talked about all the different programs that we would be implementing. IB, of course, we wanted it in the presence in all three regions of the school district. And we also then presented to those staff members, they had the option to stay or to leave. And so we provided them that option. And so as we looked at Treewind, Charter Oak, Sterling, Mark Bills, looked at that data met with all those individuals, first of all, principals or new principals at the time that were coming onboard, were they fully ready to implement? Would they embrace it? Would they embrace the change needed to, once again, implement and work at their own pace to do this? Were they in agreement to go to the training? Because it is a mandate, it's not a district mandate, it's an IB requirement that every staff member participate in that training. So just through that process, and then that's how we selected who stayed, which principals were staying at schools, which principals were then moved to other schools. And then they had a chance for Treewind. We offered the additional incentive for staff through the additional professional development time for them if they chose to move to Treewind, because it is a hard-to-staff school. And we were just looking at completely changing the overall culture.
So Ms. Andrews, would you like to add on to that?
Personal legitimate.
Personal legitimate, okay.
Well, if you know me, you know my heart. It was very important to me in the conversations with Dr. Lathan, to provide the same experiences and opportunities to students in a region where I think people felt as if the playing field was not leveled, and sometimes felt as if the students, because where they were geographically located, were unable to meet, sustain, or achieve what other students across our city have been able to do. And so that was very, very important to me. And it is, it has been a challenge, but very, very proud of the progress that we've made. The aha moments that have been had, not only by our staff, but by our students and our parents. And I think the doors of their mind that are starting to open, and as Stacy presented earlier, in regards to what globally looks like at Treewind as opposed to Charter Oak, our students are learning that there is a world outside of that two to three block radius. They are becoming interested in things that they didn't even know existed. And so, to me, it was all about making sure that they had the same opportunities, experiences as everyone else. And through Stacy's hard work and through the hard work of our staff and our students, we're achieving that every day.
And for the coordinators, bringing something new to the district where you didn't, you don't even have nearby schools to do that, what was that like for you to say, yes, we're going to go ahead and do this? And yet, it's so uncommon, really, to have this program.
I was at Whittier, actually, with Ms. Andrews, when she got moved down to Treewind. And so I was like, she told me about the position, and there was a lot of organization in the job description. And if anybody knows me, that's like my thing. So I was like, sign me up, because I can keep anything organized and keep, you know, keep it going. And then met with Ravanda and interviewed with her and heard more about it. And then that first year was really a learning year. What is this IB thing? You know, get in our application. I went to training with, we had a different IB coordinator at Charter Oak at the time. And then you network. When you go to a training, you find pen pals and you get email addresses. And pretty much everyone is willing to share anything that you ask for. And every training we've been to, we've met more and more people. In the summer, we met people that have done authorization visits at PYP. So we hounded her with questions on what we could expect. So it's been a learning process for us, too. Totally different than anything I experienced as a classroom teacher, but really amazing.
And you can tell from your presentation that you own it. You want to share it with others, but that you own it.
I put IB in anywhere I can, so.
And also, Dr. Lathan, perhaps help me to articulate, if someone says, so what does it mean that District 150 has IB program for their primary years? How do I articulate that against other education programs and other communities?
We, bottom line for me is our students are prepared internationally, to be international citizens, or not only to compete locally with their other peers, but they're able to compete globally. That we're making those connections, like I said, beyond just our community, beyond our state. There's life outside of Chicago, there's life across the river, over the bridge there. So for us, it's also meeting the demands to make sure that our students have the same level of access to a quality education like their peers in other states, on other locations, regardless of what their economic backgrounds are, or their racial backgrounds.
Great, thank you.
Can I just ask you to ask one last question? So the issue, we've heard on a number of occasions about the amount of money we spend on professional development and training and travel. Would you speak to that as teachers and-
It's phenomenal training. We have a couple teachers that are not able to go to our next training, and they're going to do online. And I strongly discourage them against doing online, because the, what you learn in an IB training, they teach you as if you're IB students. So you're not sitting there being talked at for two and a half days. You're doing and you're making things, and you're meeting people from, and some of them all over the world, that come in for these trainings. It is, I mean, the best training I have ever had.
Can you get that training to you on?
You cannot. You cannot get that training. No, no, you cannot.
And it's something that has to be experienced. It's, I don't think it would do it justice for it to be hearsay, or my opinion of what I've learned, which is that kind of teach, the teacher model. It is truly inexperienced. And to be able to network and communicate, and sometimes to give you that oomph that you need, that we can do this, because you do meet people, like when I went recently, meeting other administrators, who are in the same boat that you are, or who may be one or two steps ahead of you in school districts that are similar to yours, or schools that are similar to yours. And so it just kind of gives you the realization that this can be done, in spite of the challenges that we face. So we are very appreciative of the time that you give us to, to attend these trainings. And it is truly money well-spent. And I encourage each and every one of you to come to our schools, and so you can experience for yourself, so that you can see where your money and our time has gone.
The trainings that I've gone to also, I realize, when I'm there, how much I really needed to learn. And I thought I knew, but I learn so much more when I'm there. So it makes me curious about, you know, what else is, what are the other trainings that I could benefit this much from that are still out there? So it's an ongoing thing, because you realize how much you, you need to know once you're there, and it's, it's wonderful.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
That brings us to our annual achievement update. Okay.
I'm coming down to be with you all. Come on closer, friends. Come close, just to be close to you. Come closer. Yes. Come on, darling. Where's Rennie?
Hey, Rennie?
Who we missing? Where's Tim O'Vee? Here we land, come on. Do we have everyone? As you can see, we are a fun bunch. We're excited about our annual update. A little bit different this year. One of the requests from the board officers was, is related to testing. I've had a conversation through my bi-weekly meetings with the union leadership. There are concerns as it relates to the amount of testing, and we've heard this before also from parents in the district as it relates to testing. So we want to talk to you about why we do the things that we do. And as we move forward throughout this, the course of this school year, and also getting prepared for 1516, yes, we're already talking about 1516, we'll be looking at our testing schedule. One of the questions I've asked the curriculum team, and they're all assembled here, we are missing a few people tonight, is if we had to back off on some of the different assessments, which assessments would we eliminate or stop doing as we move forward? They all are champions, and you'll hear that tonight on the different information that we share, that they feel strongly about what we're doing. We, as a team, have decided, though, we need to spend a little bit more time with our principals and our teachers, and making sure that they understand the why, and they know how to implement after we've analyzed the data. So we're going to do a little bit more this year and put more effort around, making sure we articulate that and kind of script that out just a little bit more. Oh, I'm supposed to be clicking. Susan, you could have clicked for me. So for our, but just to go back, because the next part of our presentation tonight, the board will continue the discussion around the strategic plan. Last meeting, it's September 29th, we revisited the mission and the vision. We said that, from my understanding, and board members, please jump in, that we felt that the mission and the vision were still accurate, too, based on the overall board mission. And so we are excited that we'll continue to utilize that mission and vision as we move forward. And remember, this update is information, the data that you're hearing tonight is last school year's data. Remember, there are several things happening in the state of Illinois. We're transitioning to PARK, which is replacing ISAT, and you'll hear a little bit more about that later. You've heard from the curriculum team over the last several months, as it relates to PARK and Common Core and what we're doing to get our students prepared. So last year's demographics, total enrollment was 13,847. African-American students represented 61.78% of our school district. White Caucasian students represented 24.81. Hispanic students, 8.87. And other students that identified themselves as either maybe biracial or other, it was 4.54%. So one of the major tests that we utilize, and we're, we're looking at growth. The state states that principals and teachers annually should be growing students. Are students demonstrating growth? So when they show up to us and arrive in August, and when they leave us in June, have we demonstrated, has that student grown? And so that's the information that we're looking at as it relates to principal and teachers' evaluations. And we will use NWA, as we use that measure now, as it relates to principal, assistant principal, and special ed coordinators' evaluations. We'll be using it moving forward as one assessment that teachers will utilize to incorporate into their evaluations. Student growth is a state requirement. It is not a District 150 requirement. So we are following the state law. The state law mandated through Para 2010 that we had to implement principal evaluations to include student, new evaluation instrument and student growth. Districts over the course of, let's see, five to seven years, would implement student growth as a part of the teacher evaluation process. If you recall, three years ago now, we jointly created a new teacher evaluation instrument with our teachers' union. We are now in the process of finalizing the student growth component that will be added to the teacher evaluation instrument. It will be rolled out as a pilot, like we did with the teacher evaluation instrument, over a two to three-year process. So NWA is a computerized assessment that we utilize. It measures the growth in student achievement. The results are immediate. That's not one of the main reasons we like NWA. Teachers and principals are able to get that information immediately. We administer the NWA three times a year. So in the fall, normally right after Labor Day, we open up the assessment window. It closes normally the last week of September. We ran into some problems, and please correct me, staff, if I'm wrong. We ran into some problems as it relates to getting students aligned in the right classes, our right grade levels. And so we did have to extend our testing window. When we had heat delays or other delays, or information even from the company, we had to extend the testing window. So September, January, and May is when we administer the NWA. When we get to the end, we're going to talk about, there's a change this year. We will not administer the NWA in the spring for the courses that will be, the classes and the grade levels that will be participating in PARK. We'll talk about that a little bit more. Am I correct? I just want to make sure you all jump in and interrupt me. All right. So for the MAP, as it relates to NWA, all of our kindergarten and grade one students take a primary version of NWA. That's new this year for our kindergarten and first grade students. Right? Okay. I just want to make sure. And then also, in the past, our second through 10th grade students have always taken the NWA. But we changed this year for second grade. They're actually participating in the MAP for math and reading. So it was a different, it's still through NWA, it's just a different test that we selected and paid for this year. And then also, now all third through 11th grade students are participating in MAP for both reading and math. So if you think about this from a parent perspective, when your child enters school at the beginning of the school year, if they're a kindergarten through 12th grade student in our district, by the second week of September, their first assessment is going to be NWA. Okay? And so somebody kind of keep track as we move along and make a note of that. So with the NWA MAP data, immediately, we receive our instructional level for student. There's a score that's attached to Granita Lathan, and it says, this is where Granita Lathan is, at the end of, second week of September, she's at this particular instructional level. From that, there's a report that's generated that gives the teachers some suggestions of ways to help me reach my goal, remember it's about student growth, by the end of the school year. So it's different strategies that the teacher can use with Granita Lathan, Renee- So it's different strategies that the teacher can use with Granita Lathan, Renee, Jennifer. If we're all in a group together, those are different strategies. Here's where the hard part comes in. After that information, that final score, the hard part for teachers and principals is when you have a class, let's say of twenty-seven students. And you have in that class of twenty-seven students, every student receives an individualized report. So you have the overall class report and then you have those individual reports. It's sitting down analyzing that data so the teacher just can decide next steps. This is where we as a team feel we need to spend some additional time with principals and teachers. Want to jump in as it relates to the MAP, uh, from a teacher's perspective?
It's great because it does give the instructional level of the students. So when I was in the classroom, this was my primary go-to document. There are two pieces. It's the Descartes Continuum of Learning and there's also the MAP for Primary Instructional Data Piece. And so when that report is generated for a group of students for my class, I was able to see the instructional level of my students for all of the specific skills and so that I could pick from those skills that this group of students in my class is working and this group of students in my class is working on. And I could differentiate the instruction prior to my core math lesson of the day. So maybe my problem of the day was written differently to focus on scaffold in the instruction for this group of students, for this group of students and for this group of students, to prepare them all for the core math lesson. So the data that I received as a classroom teacher from NWA MAP was invaluable. I used it almost daily in preparing my lesson plans. It was very important.
So instructional level standpoint for a, in layman's terms, does that, does that mean I'm functioning at the sixth grade level first month and my seventh grade sixth month? If I'm a fifth grader, tell them what that means as it relates to instructional level?
For example, um, it, it doesn't give you that specific as far as sixth grade second month, but it does give you, for example, coming into fifth grade, your RIT score at the fiftieth percentile in the nation would be a two hundred thirteen. So if you were scoring at the two hundred four level, for example, that would indicate to me that you are a middle of the year fourth grader. And so that I would know where to kind of, you know, develop a plan to shore up those gaps in your instruction based on that RIT score. And there is a RIT range chart that teachers can use that will communicate the grade level that the RIT range is associated with.
So last school year, when we looked at, uh, over the period of several years, we looked at our growth in reading and math. And what we're saying is this percentage of students, so for two thousand thirteen fourteen, fifty-six point seventeen, uh, percent of our students met or exceeded their RIT score in reading, um, as it related to NWA. So that from when they entered last school year, the beginning of school, when they were tested in September to when they were tested in May, fifty-six point seventeen percent of those students met or exceeded their goals. In math, it was sixty point three eight percent. If you take a look back, starting in two thousand ten up to two thousand thirteen fourteen, you'll see in two thousand ten eleven, it was fifty-one point seven percent, one seven percent. Then we went up to fifty-seven, went up to fifty-eight and then we saw a slight decrease last year in two thousand thirteen. So when, uh, because out there, everyone's focused on ISAT. We're focused on growth. We need to know if students are growing. ISAT is a one time of year, it's a snapshot. Students take a test on, for reading on one day, they take math another day. This gives us a snapshot of how that student performed from September to, uh, the end of the school year. Remember, uh, ISAT is administered in March. So what happens from September to, really February? And, but this gives us overall that growth. And so that was where the percentages for reading and the percentages, um, for, for math.
Doctor, this is the, this is the final score for each period then?
Yes, from last, yes, final score.
Okay, this is the spring testing data then?
Yeah, this is spring testing data, yes. The new data, we will have that information as we move forward to set our baseline. But this is data from last school year. Okay? Oh, yes. Yeah, you need to, thank you, that's why you are here.
No, I was just, uh, wanted to reiterate that the test did change. I can't remember which year it did, but that, you know, would account for the drop in the scores. Right, and we added a grade level last year. Eleventh grade.
So in previous years, it was third through tenth grade. Last year, we added eleventh grade to the mix for thirteen fourteen. And it became aligned to Common Core last year. Okay, thank you. Remember jumping in? Thank you. All right, so, uh, overview by school shows the breakdown by school, uh, the percent of students that are meeting or exceeding standards. So when you start comparing how our district schools, uh, compare to each other, how are we compared overall as a district? So the previous slide was the district data. Now you look at the individual data by school. For example, Calvin Coolidge, in twelve thirteen, it was fifty-three point thirty-nine percent of students met or exceeded their standards. In thirteen fourteen, it was sixty point seven three percent. And we have that breakdown for you by school, uh, comparing the two years. Any questions on the overall breakdown for math by school? Then in reading, same thing. We have the breakdown for you, uh, from two thousand twelve thirteen, from thirteen to fourteen. And once again, we have it broken out by the various schools. DIBELS is, um, another assessment that we utilize. So the two biggest assessments that we utilize in the district for truly, and we use every, a lot, but the two that we look at as it relates to growth, NWA and also DIBELS, Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. So we look at that information. This is for our primary students, um, that we utilize it for K four. Once again, information here just kind of gives you an overview of the grade levels that we assess. It's a brief, uh, assessment that we utilize to, to assess where students are. It's a universal screener. We use our, it used to be palm piles, we're now using iPads. Have I missed anything? And so everything is through the computer. It, once again, results are immediate. If you look at the assessment measures on the next slide here for DIBELS, it shares with you, we use DIBELS NEXT and at the very bottom, you'll see DIBELS three D. This is something, uh, one that has caused some confusion this year and, um, Ms. McKinnon and Ms. Salvador, if you were just jumping in, as it relates to what we've done in the past, we've used DIBELS NEXT in previous years, but we found a, uh, in first grade, we needed additional information around comprehension. So we added reading, uh, DIBELS, um, reading three D this time around. Want to add anything on those two? DIBELS NEXT versus, uh, reading three D?
Well, both assessments.
As you can see on the slide here, uh, DIBELS NEXT evaluates specific basic early literacy skills. And what we needed to do is to be able to fill in some of the gaps for our kinder and first grade students. So we selected reading three D to be able to provide us with more information about how first grade students are comprehending at the beginning of the year, throughout and throughout the school year. Prior to this, we only had an assessment of our first grade students' reading comprehension at the mid-year mark. And at that point, it was not actually benchmarked. So there was no goal set, it was just an assessment. So by adding in reading three D, it allowed us to be able to evaluate oral reading accuracy as well as reading comprehension and give us more information about that grow-up grade for reading, which is first grade. It's a key grade for teachers to have more information about how students are comprehending texts and how they will be able to access text complexity throughout, uh, the first grade as well as, uh, throughout primary grades. So we added that, uh, there for first grade. And then of course, in second grade, we picked up again with the comprehension, uh, assessment through NWA MAP.
Okay, so, just to go back. First, the second week of September, I took the NWA, I'm in first grade. I took the NWA in reading and math, correct?
No.
No? In math only for first grade. And then my teacher administered DIBELS to me if I'm a first grader. For reading. So math was NWA, reading was DIBELS. So no additional assessment for that particular teacher to administer at the first grade level. Correct? No? Not at the beginning of the year. So you'll jump in when it's time, we get to the middle of the year. Okay. All right. So when we look at the DIBELS assessment results, we're looking to see if students are at benchmark. Are they at the strategic level or intensive level? If you see the, uh, look over to your very far right, the same colors that we think of, if you think about from RTI, Response to Intervention, our students that are green, our yellow students and our red students. Our red students need more intensive instruction, more intensive support. Same thing as it relates to RTI. Right? Okay, just want to make sure. Now, let's look at our results as a district. BOY is beginning of the year, EOI is the end of the year. We administer the assessments at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year and the end of the year. You just heard us say earlier, we do the same thing with NWA. Beginning of the year, middle of fall, winter and spring. So last year, if you look at from kindergarten, when our students arrived in kindergarten, they were at forty, forty-eight percent of those students were at benchmark. And by the end of the year, seventy-five percent of our kindergarten students were at benchmark. So you understand, and that is, we should be very excited around that for the last three years. Speak up, we've.
For the last three years, our kindergarten students, the results that have been shared with us through M-Class has, has shown that our kindergarten students have been above the national norm for kindergarten students.
And at first grade, uh, beginning of the year was fifty-five percent. End of the year was sixty-six percent of students meeting benchmark. Uh, beginning of the year for second grade, uh, sixty-seven percent. We did see a drop there at second grade at the end of the year of sixty-five percent. Yes, ma'am?
I just have a quick question about benchmarks. How are the benchmarks determined? Is, uh, is this a, a general benchmark that everybody reaches for? Are we looking at each individual student, student where they are and what, what their benchmarks are?
You want to talk about the, with the report? Yes.
Great question.
So the benchmarks are set by, uh, Wireless Generation or M-Class. They are set based on national norms for, uh, for students. Those benchmarks that are utilized are actually an indicator for how successful students will be throughout the rest of their primary year. So that green benchmark indicates that that student who scores in that green range will have an eighty to ninety percent probability to remain on grade level throughout primary grades. And so that yellow indicates, if you go back to that slide, it indicates that that student will have a forty to sixty percent probability. And so what we have to do is take a look at those benchmarks that are set. For each one of these areas, there is a cut point for risk that is determined by M-Class that again is a range for, for determining the probability of the students meeting those early literacy goals. And so what has to happen is that intensive instruction, according to the instructional recommendation, to go above and beyond for students who have a ten to twenty percent probability of meeting that national norm to ensure that the students jump over several levels and reach their benchmark assessment.
Thank you.
Is that ten to twenty percent estimate, assuming that they don't get the extra intensive instruction? We improve their chances, I presume, by?
Yes, absolutely. That is, that's an accurate assessment. It is looking at how that, where that student scores at that time, at that moment of assessment. But then given all of the different, uh, core or intensive or strategic supports in our curriculum, we have shown, uh, the ability to be able to, um, exceed those probabilities with students. But yes, that's what it's intended to show.
And that's what these, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you know what?
And that's what these numbers are here.
These numbers, no, these numbers show the percent of students at that eighty to ninety percent. So these are students who have met the benchmark.
Right.
Yes. For, for the beginning of the year, when we, when we're first assessing them and then at the end of the, of the year. So seventy-five percent of the kindergarten students have an eighty to ninety percent probability to maintain that benchmark status throughout, uh, primary grades, given that they continue to be successful with core instructional support.
Right, but, but is there any data that shows, given the intense instruction and the additional strategies, is there any data that shows that those people that were in the ten, twenty, ten to twenty and that have moved up to?
Yes, we do, we do have, uh, DIBELS, uh, provides us with fidelity reports as well as performance reports. This is a performance report, but we also have fidelity reports that are what they call correlation of effectiveness. And we can look by school, by district, by teacher, by grade level to see how many students, what percent of students started off in that red category and how many of those students ended the school year in a green or a yellow and, and also a red. That is tracked after every single benchmark assessment, beginning, middle and end. We can look, we can set the report to look at how, which, whatever data we want to look at. So we can look from beginning to a second point in time, which could be middle. We can look from middle to end or we can look from middle, or excuse me, beginning to end. So we can track that effectiveness.
One more question. You indicated that the benchmarks are based upon national averages. From school year to school year, when we're, that benchmark that we're starting at, will that typically look, so kindergarten, end of year, the first grade, beginning of year, there won't be much difference? Or will it go down a little bit because of the summer break or will it go up?
I, I have not seen that those norms change significantly. Uh, during the two thousand ten eleven school year, DIBELS, uh, standard three changed to DIBELS NEXT. And that was a part of a longitudinal study conducted by Wireless Generation to develop new norms. And so we are still operating on those norms. Uh, I'm not certain of the time as to when those norms may be redeveloped, but that's, that's what we're using at this point and that's been since two thousand eleven school year.
Okay, so is it, is it safe to assume that end of year, for instance, just end of year kindergarten is going to be the same as beginning first grade?
No, those, yes, they do change. Uh, beginning of the, the school year, kinder, middle of the school year, kinder has a different norm and end of school year kindergarten has a different norm. And that's the way it, it goes for each grade level. So each grade level has a different cut point for risk that indicates, um, what that national norm or benchmark is for that particular measure.
Okay. Go ahead and keep it there.
Okay, sure.
What's considered significant in terms of improvement? When you look at, you know, kindergarten, a twenty-seven percent jump, that's fairly significant. But what's your target, um, by grade? Is there, are you looking at a certain degree of improvement that's considered significant? How's that viewed?
Well, it depends on the measure, but overall, if we see anywhere from a ten, any, any higher than a ten percent increase from beginning to the year, beginning to the end of the year, that is significant. We can also take a very close look at specific measures. So say for example, in third grade, students are measured on their ability to have oral readinfluency. And so we take a look by measure to see if a student maintained their progress or increased from say a seventy percent to a hundred percent. So we can look to see how many students met that thirty point gain within that one measure. So there's certain, there are a number of different ways we can take a look at the data to determine significance. Certainly if students meet, if they start to begin another year and then they exceed that goal, then we can run reports to take a look at, at, at that as well. Uh, so we can look at this a number of ways and determine effectiveness.
We have any sense of what happened in second grade? From beginning of year to end of year, just curiosity?
The norms that change, uh, have a lot to do with that. It is a trend and Ms. Salvador could speak to some of that trend as well, but it is a trend for us to see a slight dip, uh, between measures with regard to first and second grade. We're excited to see this jump in first grade because there is actually a new measure that students pick up in first grade, which is highly predictive of later success for first graders. Um, and there's data out there that, that correlates that with comprehension. And so one of the things we have to continuously do is help our teachers to, to teach the skills that are being assessed prior to and incorporate those into, um, their instruction, which is aligned with our pacing guides and so forth. And when we utilize this measure as an assessment of what's been taught, we have a better, a, a better opportunity to see the growth that we've seen. And we've made, we've accomplished that in first grade, as you can see. So certainly with second grade, we have more. So, certainly, with second grade, we have more work to do as it relates to utilizing this assessment to look at how our students have been, have been taught. So, it's just incorporating more of those measures in the instruction prior to the actual, actual assessment. We've actually decreased that gap, and I don't have any of that data with me, but we have decreased that gap. You see, it's a two percent gap. We've decreased that over, over the last few years.
Thank you.
And then we have the breakdown by individual schools for you to see how the schools, it started at the beginning of the year and then how they finished at the end of the year. And once again, that was broken out by the individual schools. Want to get to that. There we go. So, our performance highlights as it relates to DIBELS for thirteen, fourteen. Every primary school showed an increase in the number of students who scored at the benchmark performance level. Glen Oak and Woodrow Wilson observed the highest growth between the two points in time, and each of these schools observed a sixteen point, sixteen percent increase from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. Keller and Northmore, eighty-five percent, and they had the highest percentage of students performing at the benchmark performance level. And our other schools increased from two, between two percent and fifteen percent. And then, we had five schools that had the highest number of students meeting the benchmark level. Keller and Northmore, eighty-five percent, Whittier at seventy-nine percent, Woodrow Wilson at seventy-eight percent, and Charter Oak at seventy-eight percent. So, those were the highlights as it relates to DIBELS. And remember, that's K four. And then, as we move into high school, our Advanced Placement and International Bachelor Lord testing, want to talk about Advanced Placement. Once again, very familiar, and want the board and the community to understand and remember that last year was the first year that the district paid for every child registering an AP course to take the test, therefore, the results came back to the district. So, two thousand thirteen, fourteen will be our baseline year as we present data moving forward with the number of students that scored a three or higher as it relates to those assessments. Advanced Placement, these are the courses that students were tested in below during the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year. Next year, testing will take place between May and, May fourth and two thousand fifteen to May fifteenth. The dates for testing are set by college boards, and that's another conflict that we're encountering as it relates to the rollout of PARC. Remember, PARC is replacing ISATs and IB testing and also AP testing. They set those testing, that testing window, we must adhere to their testing window policies. So, we have to not only do AP, IB, but also PARC incorporate that into what the state is requiring us. And so, these are the courses listed, actually, these are the courses listed for this school year, correct? I'll make sure, okay. And students have access at all three of our district high schools to AP courses. There are a couple of courses that are only taught at certain schools, and that's based on the certification and having the teacher at that particular school. So, if we look at overall, the district Advanced Placement results for thirteen, fourteen, in biology, we had, we tested fifty-four students. We had six that were proficient, they scored a three or higher, so they came out to eleven percent proficiency rate as it relates to biology. And we have the various courses listed there, the number of students that were tested, number of schools that scored a three or higher, three or higher, of course, three is the passing four or five. And as we look at that, there are some will say, well, that's nothing when you look at biology at eleven percent, but we at a district level are saying, first of all, this, every child has access in our three high schools to Advanced Placement courses. The level of rigor in an Advanced Placement course, our goal, yes, we want our students to score a three or higher because we want them to be able to transfer those credits and obtain credit as it relates to the college level. However, the rigor is going to prepare them for that college-level course. So, we want to think about it from that standpoint. Also, keep in mind, over the past three years, as we've added Advanced Placement courses, all of our teachers, there's a requirement now that they participate in Advanced Placement training that had not been a requirement in previous years, and so, then, that data follows the teachers and also the students. We incorporated, this will be our third year of Advanced Placement collaboration with our three Advanced, three high schools and those teachers. We pull them together on Saturday, September Saturday, also in February, where they come together and they look at their data and they plan, and as a result of that, one of the great things that came out of this first planning session this past September in Manual is they want to push down and work with their middle school teachers to make sure that they're planning with those middle school teachers, so students are prepared for high school. So, we're excited about that. Yes, ma'am?
I just want to point out that these tests are very rigorous. So, a student who takes an AP course could get an A or B in the test, or in the class, and still not score high enough to get credit on the exam. So, only because six students got proficient scores does not mean the rest of those students did not do well in the class.
Exactly. We do not tie in the student's grade for the course with their passage on the AP exam. So, you're correct, you could have earned an A in biology as a student at Peoria High and not pass the Advanced Placement test that's administered by the college board. Okay? And we do not receive the results until July, and so, we look at that information. So, if you look overall, going down, calculus AB was forty-five, forty-four percent proficient, chemistry fifty-five percent, English language was thirty-nine percent, English literature twenty-four percent, environmental science twenty-three percent, European history forty-two percent, and we had one student that took the French language test, and that was a hundred percent. Yes, sir?
To Ms. Wolfmeyer's comment, have we cross-correlated this to look at students that did get As, Bs, or Cs and how, and their success rate in attaining a three or better?
We want to talk about the collaboration, Pierre, what we did with the teachers.
That is, one of the things we did on the Saturday is we gave them these results as well as to what the students actually scored, and we looked at how are we grading within our classrooms? What assignments are we giving in our classrooms that prepare these students for these college-level exams? And what we found from the teachers was, we need to push a little harder, we need to give more samples early on. Not that we want only six people to pass the class, but are we building the skills necessary to be able to pass those college exams? Because a lot of time, it's not necessarily, do they know the content, but can they use skills to be able to derive the answer and give that out? And so, that is one of the strategies that we worked on at AP Saturday, and they're collaborating and sharing those strategies back and forth across the district to be able to do that.
Because, I mean, I get that a person could, you know, get an A in the class and not demonstrate proficiency, but frankly, that would concern me if a student got an A in the class but was unable to demonstrate proficiency on such a test.
And that is what we, that is what we shared as well, because we don't want, we don't want those fictitious grades out there. We want them to see that this is what, and the other thing we did on that Saturday was, and we're encouraging more of our college, I'm sorry, I thought it hurt somebody else talking, I wanted to make sure that our folks understand that what is a four, three, four, or five look like. So, we pull those samples out because we want those students to see, this is what a three looks like, this is what a four looks like, this is what a five looks like. They give released exams for us to be able to do that with, so that we can share that information out as well.
Talk about we encourage our teachers to score.
Yes. One of the things that we did is we encouraged the Peoria teachers to sign up. We've had one who signed up to be a reader, and what he shared out was, this helped me become a better teacher because I knew what I was needing in my classroom to be able to push on my students and to be able to share. For a lot of our students, this was the very first time they'd ever sat for a college-level exam. I think as we continue to push, we're going to see our scores go up. I think the teachers are feeling pressure because they want to remain teaching these classes, but they know they need to start getting results. They've got to believe that their kids can do it, and I think that's why the Saturday sessions are so powerful, because you see more collaboration and they're not in isolation anymore.
Thank you.
And then, we have the information, continuation of the results overall for the district of additional courses and also the percent proficient on those various courses. Say it again. Oh, the Spanish language was eighty percent, physics B was seventy-five percent. Pretty impressive. And then, we actually, let's see, additional courses, we have the information broken down by the three different high schools. Here, you have the information as it relates to Manual. And once again, as we looked at our three district high school, our goal, first of all, was to make sure that there was access at all three schools. So, and it's baby steps, so if people walk away and say, well, no one was proficient at Manual, well, our goal was, first of all, to provide access at Manual, get our teachers trained. So, I want to make sure people understand, we as central office administrators and also our principals, we set goals for those individual schools. Then, we set our district goal. But first, the first step was, like I said, adding, having courses available for students at all three high schools, getting the teachers trained, and now, we're starting to look at the proficiency rate as it relates to those courses that are being offered. Peoria High, here's the breakdown and the percentage, percent proficient for those individual courses at Peoria High, and then also at Richwoods. And remember, in years past, Richwoods has offered more Advanced Placement courses than in previous years at our other two high schools, and so, once again, slow and steady, but we're making those necessary gains that we need so that all high schools have that access. And these are additional courses, breakdown for Richwoods.
How do we handle the self-esteem piece for students that take it and don't pass?
Well, one of the things our students understand, and I'm glad you asked it because we were just whispering about that, is they understand that we're preparing them for the rigor of college, and that they understand that with that passage, we know it helps them, like I said, credit-wise, as it moves into college, but they also understand that they already are a step above their peers. So, let's, for example, you're participating in an AP course, let's say you earn a B and you do not pass, you're better off than that student that's sitting in a basic-level course, and when you go into college side by side, that student is still more prepared and ready for that rigor as it relates to completing those college assignments. And that's another focus, one of the things, and you just saw, heard me say it, as it relates to those three high schools, we know our goal ultimately is to step it up and talk to students about that proficiency, but we, first step was starting with our teachers and that training, and then, we start getting into that as it relates to that percent and the passage rate. But it is a step-by-step process because of the fact, just what you said about around the self-esteem. Self-esteem issues for our teachers. When they, I mean, when they looked at their results that Saturday, some were just defeated, but once again, they've participated in the training and the step, the pieces will fall together. I think for us, and it's going to be a long time coming, but it's going to happen, is looking at that progress right now of our kindergarten through fourth-grade students. If you go back and look at that DIBELS, the DIBELS results, we know we are laying the foundation, they will be ready when they move into middle and high school. So, think about those kindergartners right now, sitting in class, or they're first graders now, when they start taking AP, IB courses, when they move into their AVID courses in the high school, or they're in RICH courses, they will be ready and they'll be prepared.
And our intent, and our intent long-term is kind of to track that, see how those, to be able to correlate that early success with later success.
Right, one of the things we're doing now, after, since we've closed the NWA window, one of, Dr. Kennedy's goals, working on, is now tracking those AVID students. So, Ms. Tan has set, will set aside and group those students, so she'll be able throughout the year to look at the progress of the AVID students based on their NWA score. So, not only looking at individual schools, but groups of students based on the pathways that we've selected and the resources that we've provided them.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say that when a kid takes an AP course, ninety percent of the time, the book that they use in that course, and I can speak for the biology book because I taught AP biology, is the same book that they were using in their biology class when they get to college. So, and one of the things that students will say that they were prepared, whether or not they passed the test or not, and you can get a two, and you've done very well versus getting a three or four, but the colleges will only take levels three, fours, and fives, and, you know, so that you can use that for credit or not be, have to take the class. So, it is, it is a very good thing for students to take the AP courses, and like Dr. Lathan said earlier, it's the rigor that they are exposed to that's very beneficial.
And AP courses, not only, because people think we're just focused on and we continue to hear, well, y'all, all you're thinking about is a four-year college, a four-year university, we're just preparing our students, period. Even if a student decides that they're going into a two-year program, whether it's apprenticeship program, they're going to the community college, we still want them to be prepared. And so, once again, they should be exposed and have the same access as all their other peers, and then, they make the decision on their career pathways, whether it's right, directly into work or on to, like I said, the community college or to a university. IB is offered for our district high school students. We all know that International Bachelor, you just heard earlier tonight about the primary year's program application process for Treewind and Charter Oak. It is housed at Richwoods. These are the external assessments, and it's called the Diploma Program as it relates to IB at the high school level. It is an application process, it is a process, and I'm very proud of the work that the staff has done to make sure that every eighth-grade student in this district knows that they have an option to apply to the IB program that is housed at Richwoods. And the reason I'm saying it's housed at Richwoods, we know it's associated because Richwoods is the school that's authorized. What we found in our communication is, one of the things we want to do is do a better job of communicating that, is making sure people know that it's open. Right now, our IB coordinator from Richwoods, he's out visiting the middle schools, and all of the interventionists and the IB coordinators at those authorized schools, they're working with all students. Part of the responsibility or requirements through our High Abilities Learners Group at eighth grade is for those teachers to help students with the applications, to make sure, and the SAPs and, but to make sure that every child knows, but they go out, and if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Bowby takes current IB students to visit, but they, every school, every eighth-grade classroom or school is visited in the district, so they know about the process when the application opens, it'll open in January, and then, we go through that. But it is open, and we are pleased that everyone knows, and we've communicated that information across the entire district. So, how did our IB students do last school year? Yes, ma'am?
Before you move on from that, the IB students in the middle school arena, will they have, will they have an easy access into the high school or?
No, everyone goes, that's a great question. Everyone is required to apply, fill out an application.
Even if they've already been in the.
For example, if they're eighth grade at Mark Bills, they still have to do an application, even though Mark Bills is authorized, Sterling is authorized. Sterling and Mark Bills eighth graders are not given priority over it, over a Lincoln student or a Von Steuben student. Everyone has to go through the application process.
Well, I see that as a two-edged sword. If, you know, if they're not accepted based on the application process, then, you know, the work that they've done in middle school cannot be enhanced at the high school level.
And I want, can I just piggyback off of that and go back to that? And that's another reason that we've pushed equal access at all three high schools, because just your very point that, okay, I make an application to get into the IB program, let's say I'm not selected. We want to make sure those enriched and AP courses that are available at Peoria High and Manual, that they're the same, it should mean the same at Manual, Peoria High, as it does at Richwoods. And so, that's why we've been working with teachers around that, around professional development for that very fact that there will be some students that are not accepted, but if they're at their home school, we want to still make sure that they are prepared and they have that same access. That's why we've also talked about, as it relates to the professional development and the vertical training, the pre-AP training for the middle school teachers. We started that this past August, that was open, we want to expand that to make sure every middle school, we've talked about language arts and middle, math teachers, I want to make sure are participating in the pre-AP training. So, those middle school teachers know what those high school students need to get prepared. As it relates to the IB test that the students took, when we look here, the students that took the test last school year, the number of students that were tested, and then, the number of students that scored a four or higher, those numbers are listed there. So, you'll see, as it relates to English, we had thirty-eight students that were tested, and thirty-eight students actually scored a four or higher. Also, as it relates to, let's see here, psychology, Spanish, all those students actually that tested scored a four or higher, and we look at that information. So, just like we looked at the results with the AP teachers, the IB teachers also, and some, and what's fascinating, what was impressive for me this past September when we held the meeting at Manual is, some of our IB teachers are also AP teachers. Am I saying that correctly? So, that's impressive in the sense that they are participating in that professional development, not only as it relates to AP, but IP. So, students who have an IB teacher that's an AP teacher receive that same, that influence of that IB-trained teacher. So students who have an IB teacher that's an AP teacher receive that same, that, that influence of that IB-trained teacher. And these are, once again, the breakdowns as it relates to the IB test that, uh, students participated in at Rich Woods. And we had thirty-seven students that were registered, and what was interesting, uh, there's a student that is at Bradley this year. And so two years ago, there was, um, uprising or, uh, some activities going on in Egypt at the time. So she was not able to take her English exam, uh, in Egypt. So when she came over here to the United States, she was able to pay and she took the test this past spring at, um, at Rich Woods with our Rich Woods students. Um, so she had that access. And we had twenty students that earned an IB diploma, uh, and that was also identified at the, um, at graduation this past year. English Language Arts, our common assessments, you'll notice that's only for third, fourth, and fifth grade this year. As it relates to the common assessments, students take the common assessments. Those common assessments are aligned to the Common Core. So that's why we focused on third, fourth, and fifth grade students this year. It is also a computerized assessment that we've been utilizing. This will be our third year for common assessments?
Yeah.
Third year for common assessments, and also, all of this is tied, uh, through, uh, to pinpoint. And then just additional information as it relates to, uh, common assessments in first quarter and second quarter. Once again, they are computerized. Once again, we receive the information, uh, immediately. It is, uh, multiple choice, um, and, um, type questions. Easy CBM, curriculum-based measurement, is, uh, also an assessment that we use in math and also math for grades three, eight, and also for all of our high school students as identified on their IEPs. On their IEPs, we use Easy CBM as part of the progress monitoring piece to see if they're meeting, meeting their goals. And then for reading, we're using it for fifth through eighth grade students, right? So let's talk about and want to make sure, and who's on first now? So we talked about in September, first week of September, I was administered the NWA. So let me be a fifth grade student. So I took the NWA in reading and in math. Why would a student have to also participate in Easy CBM if I'm a fifth grade student? Who, who's on first?
I will, sure.
As a part of the RTI process, we're-
RTI?
Response to interventions. So as far as looking at the students' NWA data, we want to ensure that all of our students are getting the education that they require to fill in the gaps, to make sure that they are growing enough to become gr, on grade level, working on grade level. So we determined at the beginning of this year that we need to look at students who scored an NWA RIT score of less than the sixty-first percentile. And then those students would go on to take an Easy CBM in either math or reading or both, so that they could be benchmarked in the case that they may be receiving some significant tier-two interventions. And in that case, they would also be progress monitored using the EC, Easy CBM progress monitoring probes. So some students that take the Easy CBM, they will be, just like with Dibbles, they could be a green student, they could be a yellow student, or they could be a, a red student at high risk. And those students that are at high risk would then more than likely continue on to, to receive tier-two, some very, very specific strategic interventions, and then they would continue on in the progress monitoring process to ensure that the interventions that they're receiving are making a difference, that are causing them to grow.
And I just want to add for the Easy CBM with the older students, especially with reading and with math, after we do the NWA and figure out that a student is not on grade level, the Easy CBM is the next step because we know they're not on grade level. But then we need to dig deeper to figure out why are they not performing on grade level? So what are those missing pieces? What are the gaps in instruction? And then that helps teachers to pinpoint exactly which skill to go to, and then to be able to provide the intervention to, to attempt to get them on grade level where they need to be. So it is very important.
And just additional information about Easy CBM. And the process as it relates to the benchmarking.
There it is, yeah, you have to click it again, click it again, too.
Oh, click it one more, yeah, alright. So kind of the process, uh, that we, uh, we take as it relates to administering the, uh, Easy CBM.
And Dr. Lathan, I also want to mention, I know Susan did point this out, but it is very important to note that our goal is that only a small percentage of students eventually should be taking that Easy CBM because our goal is that students are performing at the level that we expect.
Once again, Easy CBM, three times a year, looks at, you see the different areas that it assesses. And then progress monitoring, because you've heard us say, uh, a lot about progress monitoring. So we're monitoring the progress of those students throughout the year and then making those necessary changes. And who are the students that should be progress monitored? PSAT is a college readiness test that is administered annually to all of our sophomore students, and they're actually taking the test tomorrow. Uh, and so our, the district pays for that, and once again, that is a national test. And October fifteenth is the day, it doesn't matter where you are in the country, that it should be administered. This is another, uh, information that's, kind of gives, I think, from, from a standpoint of a student and a parent, it gives colleges kind of their first introduction to a student. Because the student's, uh, information is then shared far as, this is how that student, that particular student scored, and this student might be of interest for a college to look at. Um, you want to talk about that a little bit more, about that process?
Yes, it's also used to, uh, determine, uh, whether or not they qualify for gifted programs, especially if they take, um, it, um, I'm thinking about the SAT now. But anyway, as, with the SAT, they qua, they can qualify for gifted programs if they take it early. With the PSAT, it helps prepare them for the SAT, it gets them used to taking the test. It also qualifies them for the National Merit Scholar. And I think on the other slide, it talks about the other different scholarship, um, operate, uh, programs that they can apply just by taking the PSAT. Um, for example, recognition of outstanding Hispanic and Latino students. That's another one, then the National Scholarship Service. And then once they, um, sign up for the PSAT and they take the PSAT, they are automatically entered into a lot of other, um, applications. For example, um, it also tracks, um, it helps them to determine which AP courses they're ready for. Um, it helps determine, um, which career paths that they should focus on. So there are a lot of other additional things. But the main thing that I thought we needed to do for our students this year is to get them ready and acclimated to taking these national tests, as well as qualifying for the National Merit Scholarship.
Two students this past year from Rich Woods that qualified, so they were recognized.
And I am really excited that the district is paying for this because in the past, only students who could afford to pay for it got to take it. And so now we can probably have more than two students who will qualify.
And that is the same thing that districts across the country are doing. They've taken on that responsibility of paying so that all of their students have access to sit for that, uh, for the P, PSAT. PARK, as I stated earlier, and Dynamic Learning Maps. So PARK replaces, moving forward, ISAT, uh, the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers. Once again, you've heard, uh, Ms. Gobain and Ms. Salvador in previous presentations talk about that as it relates to Common Core, many states joined, um, agreed to participate in PARK. So the same test that our students are receiving or will receive in March two thousand fifteen, if they're sitting beside a student, let's say in South Carolina, that student also in South Carolina will be taking that same assessment. Information will be immediate, we don't know how immediate, we're excited, though it's a computerized assessment. In the past, we've received information, uh, many months after school has been, uh, out, and then everything had to be finalized. So we're kind of waiting to see what happens as it relates to PARK. Uh, the first administration of the test will be, uh, start in March two thousand fifteen. Third through eighth grade students will take the PARK in both English Language Arts and Math. Once again, this is a state requirement, um, so our students will participate, uh, and we're required to participate. This is where it gets a little tricky, and we're still, uh, working through this and making sure our principals and our teachers understand it. At the high school level, it's about the course that you are enrolled in. So it's not about what grade you're in, how many credits you have, it is actually around the courses. So at the high school level, if you're in Algebra II, English Language Arts III, that's who will take the test. So if I'm a ninth grader in Algebra II, I will still take the PARK for Algebra II. If I'm in English Language Arts, most of the time, that's our juniors. Um, so when you heard us say earlier tonight that we would not be administering the NWA in May, remember we do it in, uh, September, January, May, it's because we're in conflict with when we have to administer the PARK this year for high school. Uh, Ms. Tam, Ms. Delinsky, am I missing anything as it relates to Park? Okay, so, um, we also, let's see here, what am I missing? So this is the information as it relates to the administration for PARK. Look at the testing window, March ninth, two thousand fifteen, through April third. Now, here's another thing that, uh, we had to share with our teachers and our principals. Spring break is the last week of that testing window. So that's another reason we have to finish within a three-week window because we go into spring break. So when we return from spring break, testing will be over. Once again, the state sets this testing window, not District one fifty. Then also, we have to administer, uh, so we have PBA, and then we have the end-of-the-year exam. That's April twenty-seventh through May twenty-second. That's why, that's that conflict with NWA. Also, if you remember earlier tonight, I shared that IB and AP tests are also during this time. Now here's the, here's the, the situation. If you're, a child isn't enrolled in, in AP tests, I mean, AP class, yes, they will take PARK. Algebra T, let's just say it's Algebra II PARK, it's an advanced placement math test, they'll take the advanced placement test. So they will have a combination of tests that they're required to take. So AP and also PARK. That's where you see and you've heard some of the frustrations around the number of tests that we're going to administer. But we don't have any control over the testing window as it relates to those required tests. Also, uh, Dynamic Learning Maps Alternat, Assessment is, it replaces the IAA, and that's the assessment that our students who are most, are our life skills students. So think about students that are enrolled at Jamison, that could possibly be at the Developmental Center, at, um, Roland Acres. They're at Keller in the Life Skills class, give me some other ones.
Woodrow Wilson.
Woodrow Wilson Life Skills. Von Steuben Life Skills. So those students will take the Dynamic Learning Maps Alternat Assessment. And what- Okay, and then, did I forget one? Okay. So now testing in, oh, oh, and ACT is another, uh, requirement as it relates to that. So here's the list of all the different assessments that are administered in the district. Here's the while, here's where everybody get, gets a little frustrated.
Can I ask a question? You were talking about the, the special ed kids. Okay, so we're switching from ISAT to the PARK. Do the special ed students still take the PARK?
Yes, yes, they do.
And is it going to be the same way it was with ISAT where they're-
Testing accommodation?
No, no, with the groups and their groups, I mean, are they taking the test at their age level rather than their functioning level like they did with the ISAT?
Same as ISAT, the, you know, we'll still be able to utilize the testing accommodations and modifications. But they are at the grade level, not your functioning level.
Okay.
So that-
So they haven't changed that?
They have not changed that, that's a great question. So if I am a special ed student, or no, just to say a student, a third grade student that's not on grade level, I'm functioning at a kindergarten level.
I'm concerned, I'm, I'm more concerned about the special ed kids because, uh, uh, a child with, with a disability who is twelve years old may only be functioning mentally at a second grade level. But they have to take the test for, that the twelve-year-olds take.
Yes.
With almost no chance of passing it, just like always.
That's correct, Maureen, you want to say something?
Unless the IEP team decides that they take the, the-
Right.
DLM, yeah, the altern, the alternative, um, assessment, yes.
And then it'll still work the same way, that it will keep a, a school from getting AYP because they're special group, or no?
There's no more-
No more.
No more AYP.
Okay. That's another reason-
But, but isn't there going to be something that we're supposed to be attaining?
No, it, individual districts will set the goals around their, their growth. And that's why we are utilizing NWA and we're looking at Dibbles because once again, it'll tie back to the principal and teachers' evaluations. But we will not receive a AYP, uh, result anymore. That's another reason for tonight, you, you have all the assessment information outside of ISAT from last spring that'll be released, um, Halloween. And so once again, this is a list of this, uh, assessments that are administered in the district. Um, and it, it, once again, it depends on your grade level and then where a student placed once they receive that initial assessment, that first initial assessment at the beginning of the school year's NWA. The frustration is one of the things I shared with the team today. The frustration for a classroom teacher is if you have a high number of students that are red, let's just use our colors there, and you have to, uh, look at the different strategies and skills that those students need. It's planning for that high number of intensive students that gets to be frustrating. Because remember, those intensive students need to be progress monitoring, are they reaching their goals? And so that's why I said we need to spend more time with principals and teachers of making sure that they understand that once they have those results, understanding how to truly plan instruction around those results and work with them on flexible grouping, where that I might be the fourth grade teacher, but if I have fifth grade students in, in Ms. McKinnon's class that need some of that instruction from fourth grade, that we're moving those students down for what they need, for those, for the gaps that we need to close up. And we're doing that across the district, we just need to be doing more. But we need to find ways to support teachers more because there are days of instruction that are going to testing. And we have to be very honest and transparent about that.
Just to be clear, on this list, not all students take all of these tests.
That is correct.
And not all teachers have to administer all of these tests.
That is correct, we just wanted to summarize it for you, for example, okay. Right, but on our, okay, on our testing calendar, and it's actually much larger than this, it's like eleven by seventeen. On our testing calendar, we have it by grade level. So if you're a kindergarten teacher, you just need to look down the first column here to see what it, what test do I need to administer as a kindergarten teacher? Once again, the problem is helping them analyze that result, those results after they do that. So not every teacher has to administer those tests. First semester exams, I just want to point that out, first, uh, those are for high school where you see December seventeenth through nineteenth and May twenty-second through twenty-seventh. Quick note, as it relates to PARK for second semester, if a student is in Algebra II or, uh, English, uh, three, we're waiving their second semester exams. Once again, so they do not have to take a second set of exams, so that's waiving. We do that now, it's a part, and there's a criteria as it relates to board policy for waiving those exams. Am I missing anything that you all can see, uh, from the schedule? Or board members' questions or concerns that have been raised to you as it relates to the, uh, testing, uh, in the district?
I think it should be noted that the, the top two, uh, parked exams, those are practice tests.
And a part of daily instruction.
And part, yes, a part of daily-
Those are training exercises for kids and teachers, so they learn how to use them.
So I write that in my lesson plans, but we just listed it so they would know when that information would be available because we were waiting for those, uh, examples to be released, correct?
Correct.
Okay, am I, yes, sir?
Which one of these tests are unique to District one fifty?
Um, hmm, nothing, most districts use a combination, they, yeah, I-
Probably the common assessments.
Oh, common, okay, the common assessments. Probably in our area, but other districts across the country do use common assessments.
The rest are national.
They're national tests, and districts have, but, uh, districts have the, the choice to select outside of PARK. Uh, they have the choice and access, which is at the top for our ELL students. They have the flexibility to choose which of these assessments are administered, okay?
And I don't mean to put you, any of you on the spot, but I don't know if any of you have a thought on this. I don't need a, an exact number, but do you have a feel for how many? For, and, and let's say for one student, an average student, how many instruction days they're losing to testing? Does anybody have a feel for that, just a ballpark figure?
I can give you some general numbers, but I need a couple of days.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just curious. I think that's the concern that a lot of people have, is that there's so much testing going on that students and teachers are losing instructional time. And I was just sort of curious if we could find, get an idea of how much instructional time a student, and I know it's going to vary from whether primary, middle, or high school, but how much instructional time they're actually losing due, doing, due to all of this testing? Because at what point, at what point are we over-testing to the point where it's to the detriment of the instruction of the students?
One of the major-
And I understand, though, that every test you're giving, that's the thing I like, is it's helping the teachers understand what every individual student needs so that they can help them, um, improve and, and overcome their weaknesses. But I, I, that's the thing I hear from, from, whether it's teachers or parents or whoever, that are we over-testing to the point where it's, it's detrimental?
One of the major factors that would go into that determination would be their ability level of student. Um, when we're talking about the progress monitoring, usually those are quick probes of just a few questions that can be administered rather quickly. So huge amounts of instructional time are not lost in that process. You know, so it'd be the major test that everybody, the NWA for sure, and the Dibbles for sure, that would take up the- that would take up the brunt of the instructional time, and then depending on the ability level.
Okay.
But it also, but it also promotes instructional efficiency because you know where to go.
Well, you're targeting instruction.
Correct.
Is what you're trying to do. You're trying to minimize the amount of time of general instruction and target it to that specific individual.
Just, uh, uh, these testing, how many are required? And how many of these are we doing just so that we can?
Access is required, PARC is required.
ACT is optional.
Optional.
It's optional.
Yeah, yeah, we could have passed on.
It's, they'll pay for it, so, pay for. So PARC is required, um-
Access.
Access is required because that's for ELL students, um-
PSAT is required.
PSAT, PSAT is not required. Like I said, we did, this is a way to help our students.
Right.
But it, right, uh, where you see the NA, NEAP, where it says January twenty-sixth through March twenty-sixth, that is required for Roland Acres and Roland Acres only. The government or US Department of Ed selects a random school, and so you are required to participate in that, that's how they get those results. So that's Roland Acres only. Am I missing?
Gifted.
Yeah, COGAD, uh, for October twentieth through thirty-first, that's the, one of the, one of the assessments that we use as it relates to admission to Washington gifted, so every fourth grader, huh?
Fourth grader only.
Yeah, yeah, fourth graders only, so every fourth grader in the district, uh, that's administered to, um, am I missing anything? That's it, right?
The rest, the state, well, DIBELS is our choice.
DLM for the IAA.
AP and IB are required if we want to be recognized.
Okay.
DLM is required because that's the, that's the, that's the state requirement.
That's the state requirement.
Okay. So the rest of these tests, some of the rest of these tests are given so that we can, um, adjust and-
Inform instruction.
Based on what the child needs.
Yes. And one of the things, for example, going back to our principal and teacher evaluations is NWA, it has, it will be, continue to be the mainstay for us as a district because of the fact that our teachers are comfortable with that, our principals are comfortable with that as it relates to, uh, factoring into their evaluations.
Question, uh, how, how is the cost associated with these tests? Is it by the number of students, or is it by the administration of one test, or how does that work?
The users, the number of students.
Number of students. And, and the tests that are required by the federal government, do they reimburse us for that?
No, like, the, they, you know, they'll send everything, but we're required to administer it. PARC, we're required to, this year it'll be, uh, computerized, so we're just required to do it, but they don't send us any monies for proctors or substitutes or anything like that.
And then the tests that are required by the state of Illinois, do they fund any of that?
They, they fund the test. I mean, but we're required, for example, let's just, since you asked, that's a great question, as we move to PARC, remember, everything will be computerized. And so we had to conduct our assessment district-wide, we had to run a test on our systems, our internal systems, and now we are, we've, over the past two years, we've been purchasing computers. We have one, I think the team met today for the final, you're coming with a?
Tentative final.
Tentative final of all the additional, uh, things that will, will need to be purchased. So it's a requirement, but it's an unfunded mandate. It is probably an unfunded mandate, uh, each computer costs us about seven ninety-nine to eight ninety-nine, and so we've had to add labs, we will have to transport a few, one or two schools.
One school.
One school, uh, Thomas Jefferson does not have the space as it relates to the number of computer labs that are needed so that we can test all the students that are required by that grade, that particular school.
I guess that's what I was getting at, is regardless of the merit of this, these represent unfunded state and federal mandates that we end up having to pay for, and it, it has to come out of the aid fund because that's what we have to do.
Yes, it does. And it was not, like I said, we tried, and over the, uh, last several years, we've utilized title monies, uh, schools have purchased their own technology, but at the end of the day, it, the district must bear that burden, and that is the aid fund.
Thank you.
Not only that, it also has driven infrastructure improvement with, along with bandwidth and things like that, which is also unfunded.
Yes, and it goes back to, and I'm excited because we're finishing up and you're getting ready to start that discussion, is, uh, people have asked, why were the three goals as it relates to the strategic plan around reading, math, and technology? Those were the weakest areas, uh, when I entered in the district in two thousand ten, we looked at our assessment information and looked at what we did not have in place, um, technology, you know, walking in still seeing the ivory computers, uh, that was kind of scary because I think I had those in high school. So we've, it was a long time, all right, Timothy. Uh, so we've made those changes. We still have a lot of work to do, but I really wanted to say a special thank you, not only to our principals and our teachers, but also to our curriculum team. They work under some extreme pressures, uh, to meet demands of, uh, demands of all of our users in the district, uh, but they are really working hard to make a difference in the lives of the children. So I don't tell you all enough that I appreciate you, I think I ask you for more, so I want you to know that I do appreciate you. Any other questions? No, then write it down. Thank you.
Thank you. I know some of these presentations get lengthy, but as a board member, they're helpful to me to be able to understand why we do some of the things we do and to be able to answer some of the questions we get out in the community about why we do some of the things that we do. So I appreciate the staff and, and you taking that time to do that for us.
I agree.
Okay, that brings us to the discussion tonight on the strategic plan update process discussion. As I looked at my notes from the, from the meeting on the twenty-ninth, the goal for tonight really is sort of a brainstorming type of exercise, um, for us as board members to come up with, whether you want to, we want to call them goals or guidelines or whatever, for us to, to, uh, push out into the public for their input on their priorities on those things to go into a strategic plan. As I was thinking about this over the last couple of weeks, one of the things we need to remember is, and I have a hard time remembering this, is that these goals need to be general. We aren't the ones who determine how to accomplish them. I have problems with that sometimes myself, staying away from that. And, um, and like I said, this is going to be a list of potential goals we come up with for public input on their priority and tonight, and then I think the idea was to finalize everything on the twenty-seventh, um, whatever we come up with, they aren't all necessarily going to wind up as part of the strategic plan. It'll depend on what input we get from, um, the public on them and what we decide as priorities. One of the things that in talking to Mr. Cloyde and bringing him up to date in our discussion that he brought up was, and I've talked to Dr. Lathan about this, as we put these together, whether it's when we get to the action plans or, or the goals, we need to have costs associated with them, because I don't think we can make decisions on priorities as a board unless we know what something is going to cost us, because if it's prohibitive, we're not going to be able to do it. We've got to be able to pay for it in order to do it. So, um, Mr. Cloyde did, um, put together sort of a draft of some of his thoughts I thought might help us in a, as a starting point. Give me one of those back, I don't think Mark got one. Here's one for Mr. Wilkinson, I think there's enough. And, and by the way, um, Mrs. Kossick wanted me to let you know that she did have to leave, she has a family illness, and so she apologizes, but she did need to leave a little early tonight. So I don't know, um, you can look at this real quickly, he's got some very, some major, areas that he's thought of. Uh, I don't know if you just, if you want to talk about those a little bit, and then we can sort of jump in if people have comments on those or whether they agree on them.
Sure, I, I'd be happy to do that. I, when we started on this process, talking about it a couple of months ago, I did some research and identified, oh, I'd say maybe a dozen different, uh, school districts that had done either original or updated strategic plans. And I looked at the topics involved, and then I went back and looked at our strategic plan and, and acknowledging the fact that it was really focused on three things at the start, and we all understand that, that this is, uh, really taking into account some more subject areas. Uh, I, I saw plans that ranged from a hundred and fifty pages, which were down to the minutest of details, and, uh, one district, uh, finally got to the point of they had a plan on one page. And there's differences in philosophy of how you do that. Uh, as someone observed, it's really tough to write one on one page, it's probably easier to write a hundred and fifty pages. But I would guarantee if you write a hundred and fifty pages, no one will ever read it or, or take the book off the shelf. So there's, there's a fine line between, um, setting goals and identifying priorities and doing the micromanagement of, of managing the day-to-days of an organization. So I'll read these for you if you would like, just to, I, I had nine categories, and I just did that because I wasn't here for the meeting, so I figured this was my makeup homework for that. I had to do something to atone for my absence. Uh, category one, traditional academics, two, career and technical education, three, people, four, safety and security, five, district facilities, six, supporting services, seven, community relations and communications, eight, financial stewardship, and nine, potential new forms of organization. And I think, uh, I put some ideas down here, but if we're going to talk about strategy, this is the time when we think about other ways to go at this. Um, and that's not to suggest we, uh, turn everything upside down, but this is one of those, uh, sort of rare opportunities to think about, uh, what we really want to do and accomplish over the next three to five years, whatever the timeframe is for this plan. So, um, those are just some categories. Obviously, this is a suggestion, it's a starting place. I showed as, I stamped it as a draft, so everybody realizes it's a draft, but it's a starting point. And, uh, obviously, we need to do the work based on something, so here's a start.
Mrs. Ross?
I've been here for quite a long time now. I keep talking about how old I am. Uh, I think that probably for those people who don't, uh, haven't, uh, you know, gone back and, and looked at where we started, uh, where we were and where we are now, I see these as wonderful strategies, um, or more so objectives and goals to meet the strategies. I'm wondering, I'm not clear on whether or not we are, uh, changing strategies, because the strategies that we had developed early on back in, uh, two thousand and two, and I want to talk a little bit about, um, what I feel is the core business of this district as an educational organization, uh, to educate the children of District one fifty. Um, to that end, any diversion from that, uh, in my opinion, from that core business would be an injustice to the children. Um, and I think there's a kind of a, maybe, maybe a global attitude or global understanding of strategic plans, it's all over the map, there are all different types of strategic plans, but if I could just, uh, talk a little bit about what our vision is and the strategic plan, strategic plan should be built on how to, um, forward the vision and the mission. Is that correct? Am I correct there? Okay, so if I can, uh, look at the vision, which is to take pride in educating and graduating each student, each of our students, prepared and inspired to contribute to the world. Now, that means something different to each person, I'm sure, but it is the vision, if you can transfer that vision to other people, then of course they can own it. But with that vision, then you have the mission, which is to ensure that each student reaches his or her full potential or fullest, uh, academic and personal potential and is a well-balanced citizen. Do, do we all understand, we all on the same page with that? So to do that, to that end, to get there, um, the strategies that were developed in two thousand and two, which we've been working on since that time, they've been enhanced, and basically, I applaud the administration for what they've done and taken, uh, walking into somebody else's vision and, 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 uh, mission and looking at the strategies and actually developing, um, developing, um, you know, the objectives and, and looking at the core beliefs and developing the parameters, who's responsible for this, kind of the working, uh, part of getting us to where we want to go. So, um, and I shouldn't have to, I don't have to read these to you, they're probably somewhere on your list, but number one was, uh, we will ensure effectiveness of all staff. And so, that was number one strategy, and of course, there were, there were steps and action steps and, and, you know, goals and objectives, how to get there, and some of the things we've been doing with PD, I think is, is ideal to, that's getting us to where we want to go. And then number two, we will reconceptualize teaching and learning so that each student can achieve his or her personal educational plan. That's what we say. Each student has a personal education plan, right? And so, and number three, we will create optimal learning environments. And everything I think that we've done is toward moving these strategies forward and getting to where we want to go. And we establish a culture of learning throughout the community, and we will involve the community in our schools, in our schools, in the community. So we've developed some community schools, we, we've been working with the community in several different ways, uh, so, and we will ensure the full participation of all families in educate, in the education of their children. That one I think we've been working on, we established the parent-teacher advisory committee, that wasn't a choice, we were mandated to do that by the state because we didn't have enough parental participation, but it still fit right within our, um, mission and vision for our children. And we will achieve unity by honoring diversity. And so, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm trying to see, are we, have we changed our mission, and I asked that question before, have we changed our, the vision for our children? So I, I don't know how we can develop new strategy. We can develop new action steps and new objectives to get there, but have we, are we changing our, our mission and, 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 and vision? That's different from goals, of course. So, uh, can we, and can we, uh, get an understanding and agree on whether we're changing that? Of those?
I think we talked, talked about this on the twenty-ninth, about the mission and the vision, and, and the consensus I thought that night was that we are not changing that.
Okay.
That we are staying with what we have.
Right. So what we've done in the past in, in, in developing these objectives and core beliefs and parameters and all the action steps to get to where we want, who's responsible for what, and measurements and all that, so what we've done in the past, are we working, we're still going to use those strategies and need, we need enhanced, um, objectives to continue to meet those, that mission and, uh, what are we, I'm just wanting to get an understanding so the community can get an understanding.
I would just suggest that list you, you read, first of all, those are goals.
No, they're strategies.
No, they're, strategy is how you get there. Those are endpoints, that's what you're trying to get to, that's a goal.
Well, we had Dr. Cook-
Let me just finish this point.
Okay, go ahead.
The point is, there's nothing inconsistent with what I put together in terms of areas of content, and everything that you mentioned is a goal, fits within one of these categories. There's nothing inconsistent with what you said and what was presented.
No, I didn't say it was inconsistent, I'm, I'm agreeing with-
It seemed to me you were saying that, and I was trying to clear that up.
No, no, I, I wanted to make sure that, that, for me, I understood, um, that we were all working, we're not tearing down anything, but we're working from, from the core that we already have.
Yeah.
To move into the next millennium, if you will, to help continue our mission and, uh, vision.
Well, Dr. Lathan had mentioned that reading, math, and technology were really demonstrable needs at the time you came into the district. Um, while I think those are the kinds of needs that are always a work in progress, I mean, those kind of form the basis for our three SMART goals. What would our, what, what other three concepts today would form basis of our three SMART goals?
And I think it's just, it goes back to-
Reconceptualizing, teaching, and learning.
I mean, like I said, that was just the area that we felt we needed to drill down to and make sure that we had our professional development plan.
Right.
And as we transition also to common core, so that was kind of hanging overhead. It will, those will continue to be, and like I said, similar to what Mr. Cloyde, as I was laughing, because I held down academic safety, communication, and organizational effectiveness. So, once again, everything would fit, it was just trying to, to narrow it. So I don't, we're not changing our, our movement, from my understanding, we're not moving away from it. We just, as a staff, we needed some, uh, some direction as we move forward. So it's, it's, it's a large influence.
How do we get to the next, to the next level?
How do we get to the next level? We have some ideas, but we want to hear your ideas, uh, because we want some of that direction.
At the risk of starting with the most, like, conceptual thing mentioned here, um, alternative, or new forms of school organization, I suppose-
or new forms of school organization, I suppose how I envision that looking in the body of any strategic plan is it, well, first off, where do we want to, where do we really want to go with that? I mean, I don't think you're right. Given the, that's one of those things where you mentioned that we're going to have a financial cost associated with everything we have down within the strategic plan, right? So I mean, that's going to be something that financially would be a big leap. And who knows with the uncertainty of state finances, where we're going to be with that. But I'm kind of curious, assuming we had the finances, what's your opinion on where we should be with alternative forms of organization that's listed here?
Just looking at the ones that are listed here.
Yeah, or share your own input.
The year-round schools would be one of the focus areas. I think based on either federal or state mandates as it relates to neighborhood schools and how we have to, the way the zones, the tenant zones, I think that will be hard as it relates to certain neighborhood schools, eliminating middle schools. Not saying it couldn't be done, but I think year-round schools would give us more for what we needed to do and make us more competitive with our neighboring school districts and offer parents additional choices. And so then it would be, of course, open enrollment as it relates to a year-round school, just looking at the list.
So we'd probably start out with something first that's optional in terms of year-round.
Right, right. Something that's optional. Well, it just depends.
We have a model already in place.
Right.
We have a model already in place.
But some places it's not, some places it's optional, some places it's not. That's your neighborhood school, and your neighborhood school is a year-round school. So that, once again, the board would make that decision, if you want it to be an option or is it just assigned to that particular, you know, that particular school. We already, so we definitely have the model, it's just, but then you have to also keep in mind that based on our collective bargaining agreements, teachers though have an option whether or not they stay or go. And if they choose to leave, you have to be able to place them somewhere or you take the hit financially to overstaff one school as people decide to leave.
I was talking about Valeska as the model.
Yes, ma'am. We already have the schedule. I mean, that's not about the scheduling. As I said, it's the staffing as a, mainly it's the staff that want to leave, decide they don't want a year-round option. And you know, we had a good example of this last year when we transitioned our pre-K classes from Sterling to Valeska Hampton. So remember, we started seven places, what, seven months out talking to staff. And I think at the end, we only ended up with one or two people that chose not to move over to Valeska. But when you're talking about a building full of teachers and so more than one or two, you start having to look at that. But not saying that it could not be done. It'd be very easy to do if the finances were there.
The point of adding those was to say, those are ideas, thoughts. And if we're going to approach this, now's the time to start thinking about those things. And we may not have the resources to do any of that, to do anything different. It doesn't contradict any of the long-term goals that we're looking at, and it doesn't contradict the mission and the vision that's been articulated.
And plus these are.
Just, the question is, how do we really want to get there and are there things we can do that can distinguish the district from other districts in the area that provides us with an advantage or an attraction to parents and students?
As a precursor to year-round school, I would suggest that we try to involve some kind of mentoring or internship program over the summer for some of our middle school to high school students. Give them the opportunity to go out with partners that maybe we'll be able to recruit and show them how their education matters in the real-world sense. I think that'd be a good idea. I mean, I know that you've talked, Rick, often about some of the career fairs and things that are hosted in these PR. I think those are the kinds of things I would want to see promoted. It goes along with all the strides we've made with our Voc Tech. And now we take it one step further by adding that curriculum piece. I just, if we can't, if year-round school is something that isn't in the works for us financially, I want to see where we, tough to make anything mandatory. So I'm not even going to suggest that, but it's about, when the summer bell, when the school bell rings for the last time in May, or I guess sometimes in June, I don't want the learning to stop for the kids because we don't like to see that fall back. We want to keep pushing them ahead. And so, some sort of learning program in the summer now. I know that it's been suggested bring back summer school. That should also be on the table. That's where we need to go, but that's usually not available to all. I'm talking about, yeah, a structured curriculum that is potentially the responsibility of the student and the parents to accomplish over the summer.
And I want to just go back to your, basically your original question around the three SMART goals. Honestly speaking, those three SMART goals, reading, math, and technology, could still remain the same. If you keep, go back, go to the plan as it exists, there were many things that were outside of reading, math, and technology, because it takes all of our areas working together, the finance team, food services. So we had many tasks that we were trying to accomplish. And so some of the tasks really are the things that should be changing, because if you look at this running list here, it's kind of a spark for us to start researching to look at what can we do, what's feasible, how could we might possibly pilot something. So those three goals could always, I mean, we are educational institutions, I'm going to always say we need goals around student achievement. But we also have the task that we have to look at as it relates to hiring of personnel, human resources piece, as it relates to finances.
I think this is one of the reasons we struggled at the last meeting with what we wanted to call these, is, I'm not a strategic plan person, so my feeling is that we have to come up with what direction we as a board think we want this district to go in. I don't know if we're going to call them goals or strategy. I don't think we, personally, I don't think we need to get caught up in the semantics of what they are, but we've got to come up with a direction so that the staff knows what they need to do to get us in the direction we want to be. And I think that's where we want to get public input. Once we come up with the directions, if that's what you want to call them, where we think we might want to be going, and then we need to prioritize those, and we want to get input from the public on which of those things are priorities to them. So I don't know what we're going to call them, but we need to come up with some kind of a list. One of the things that popped into my mind as I thought, as a very general, is safety. Now, that's going to mean things, different things to a lot of different people. It fits into one of these things that you talked about, you know. But I don't know, I guess we have to decide what it is we really want to come out with. To me, it's, whatever you want to call it, it's the direction that we need the staff to take us. And it's in different areas. What direction do we want to move in financially? What direction do we want to move in in student achievement? What direction do we want to move in in safety? What direction do we want to move in in different areas? I don't know if that makes sense to people or not. But we've got, I mean, whatever we call it, we've got to come up with something that we can present to the public that they can give us feedback on, if that's where this is going and that's what we've said we wanted to do.
Typically, strategic planning process involves stating where you are today, where you want to be in the future, what is the gap, what resources are necessary to close the gap, and what are the priorities of closing those gaps. And that's what this is intended to do, is set out a framework for thinking about the areas where we may have information, statistics, and data that says, this is where we are. And then we say, okay, where do we want to be from here? What do we want to do to change anything about safety and security? Are we not where we think we should be or need to be? What about facilities? We have a capital plan that we've talked about from time to time, and it's a very important part of our long-term framework. What do we do about supporting services? We don't have to have every nickel and dime identified, but we need to have some idea of what we're doing today, what results we're getting, and then what do we want to see it look like in three or five years? And then what does it take to change, to close that gap? And my sense is that we're going to have a tough time closing all of those gaps that we think we see. So we're going to have to then set priorities and say, it's more important to do three or four things really well than to do ten or twelve halfway.
And I think we talked about that at the last meeting, that you were not there, is that one of the important things is defining where we're at today.
Well.
Or where we've been and what we've accomplished so far, and then where we want, where we still want to go.
Well, I think if each of us asks the question, what's it going to take to ensure that each student, I mean, that's the, I'm going back to the overall, what's it going to take? It's really going to take a lot of different objectives to be able to meet that particular mission. What's it going to take to ensure that each student reaches his or her fullest academic and personal potential as a well-balanced citizen? If that's what we're working for, toward. You know, what, how much, how much money is it going to take? What programs is it going to take? How many people? What kind of safety? I mean, all the things that are here, it's just asking a question, what's it going to take? Everything you need to know, you learn in kindergarten, right? I mean, seriously. I think we can make it too complicated, but we have to keep our core, our core business is educating children. That's the core business. That's why we're here, here as an entity. That's why we are here as board members, is to educate children. And all the things needed to help do that. And I have participated in a lot of strategic planning at the state level, at the national level, National Information Referral Service. I don't know if you, never mind. But anyway, I'm just saying, what is it going to take to get us to where we want to be? And we're not going to be able to do it all in one. That's why there's five-year strategic plans, ten-year strategic plans. What are we going to do and how are we going to do it right away? What have we got, you know, within this year, next year? And then how do we measure it?
Does the, does the where you want to be, does that have to happen, is that thing measurable?
Yeah.
Yes.
And do we look at each student?
Possibly, yeah.
Yeah.
Can't feel good about your input.
You know, you can't measure the feeling.
I mean, I kind of know, I know the answer to that question. I'm just seeing that is, because both of you have said it, it's where do you want to be? And so I'm trying to think what would come out of my mouth if I were to say, where do I want to be?
Part of what we just heard this evening was a very, very detailed assessment of our outcomes in many dimensions, in terms of the testing and so forth. That's the as-is. It's set. It's there. So if we want to move those scores or we want to improve those changes from fall to spring, what is it necessary to do that? What are we, what do we have to do? What are we lacking that we haven't provided? What do we see necessary to do that? Those are the sort of things that.
So we're probably still talking about improving our achievement, our achievement scores essentially as the overall where we want to be, right?
That'd be standard.
Example, just to go back of that, what we talked about as a team is finding a way that there's, and when I was a principal, we called it our day-to-day. But immediately when the results are available, there's a day-to-day for the principals and the teachers at the grade levels to truly sit down. So it's not, I'm trying to run as a principal from grade level to grade level, but we have a dedicated time, and we sit down as a team and we're doing it, and we're making sure everyone truly understands. But part of that is when they leave, they leave with their plan. Because like I said, that's where I think the frustration is coming in from teachers, is not having enough time. And then that dialogue, trying to get our curriculum specialists to all of the schools where we have a schedule that we roll it out. So that's one of the things that we are seeing, is how can we do that as we look at our professional development dollars and our funding to have the subs available and the time, or is it time after school time on a Saturday where we pay people to come in and to participate in those conversations? There's not enough time in the school day, and thirty to forty-four minutes will not get it in one conversation.
So that's a task that's not on the current plan, which would be an action step.
Yeah, action step. But the way we've operated over the past few years has gotten us to a point, and again, how do we get to the next point? I mean, we have not involved parents enough. So where do they, you know, where do they fit in? How do we change that paradigm where the parents are part of their, I mean, you know, for the most part, the parents are involved, but how do we get them more involved?
And I think that's another one, just to. I keep forgetting to turn on my microphone. Just another thing that we did a little bit differently this year, and then at the next board meeting, the October twenty-seventh board meeting, you're looking at those parent involvement plans. We posted them like we did our budget. Once again, that's something that's not in this process, but as we reviewed and looked at how do we get more parents involved? How do we make sure that each school has that parent involvement committee? How do our parents get to look at that information and then provide that input back? So those are things that we still, even though the plan, because one of the questions I had is, okay, what if we had put from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twenty on the plan? What would be the conversation that you as board members would be holding today with me? Let's just pretend that it didn't say two thousand and fourteen. What would be your conversation? Because those three SMART goals, we'll always need, you know, technology, I don't think is going to go away. We don't think we're going to go back. Reading and math, we need some other things, but what would be the conversation today? Or what would you be asking me?
What are the outcomes and are you satisfied with them? And what do we do to improve them?
Not satisfied with the outcomes. We'll never be satisfied until we have, once again, a hundred percent of our students graduating in four years. So I mean, our goals, we're still working. The plan is quote-unquote expired, but the work of the team and us as employees of the district, it doesn't end. We continue to work because we have to still meet that goal. And that goal, like I said, at the end of the day right now, is not only is students graduating within four years, but they're graduating prepared for the pathway that they select. But that work starts down in primary and middle schools. It doesn't start in the high schools. We're playing catch-up now.
Yep.
I mean, and the one thing I see, while there's some bright spots in our score, there's also some spots where we flatline, where we go down a little bit. And you have to ask yourself, despite all these things that we do, despite all the instructional changes we've made, despite the culture that we've changed, what other pieces are we missing? Part of what I'm thinking too is, you know, how do we push out the message from the district that we have an expectation that when you send your child to District One Fifty, we have the fullest expectation that he or she is going to come to our schools, walk through our doors, ready, willing, and able to learn? Because there's a lot of great opportunities with that, a lot of optimism associated with that. And then frankly, there are also going to be some children that maybe haven't gotten that message. And we need to make sure that when you enter our schools, it is going to be work time.
And you know what else, though? It's a different kind of kid now. You know, it's a different child that we're dealing with. And although I hear people say, and ministries and teachers sometimes say, well, we're not social workers. You know, these kids come with different issues from different backgrounds. So if we don't move from this paradigm to this paradigm and actually figure out how to address that, then we won't be able to do it all ourselves.
But you'd also said, but you'd also said, our primary goal is educate these kids. Anything outside of that realm is a disservice to the kids. So I mean, if you were to talk to some educators and said, we're not social workers, and you're like, you got to take them for what it's worth. You got to take them, take them how you find them and what they come to you as. And say, well, you want us to be social workers, and you don't agree with what you just said.
No, no, no. No, no, no. That's not what I said. I said, we can't do it ourselves.
Agreed.
If we're not the social workers, then we're going to have to partner with organizations and other people in the community who also are stakeholders and have an investment to get this work done. We will, there needs to be a SEMA system, in my opinion.
And what are some of those support groups that you envisioned happen, envision coming on board that aren't on board yet?
Well, I think there's a lot of community organizations that would take a piece of this and partner with us. I really do. Because we do it now. We have lots of community members and partners now that we work with.
And I just want to say that as it relates to our partners, we do, a lot of our partners, we're paying them, you know, we're paying them for that partner. But as you said earlier, you know, it is a different type of student, but the financial resources, not only from the state and the federal level, have not kept up with that different type of student that we're receiving. And down to, and you heard me say earlier tonight, a classroom teacher that has a high number of intensive students, he or she is not only trying to teach their students, but they are playing the role of a social worker.
Right. It's impossible for them to do the teaching.
And it is impossible. So that's where the frustration, it's not that they don't want to be, you know, the social worker council. It's just so many mandates and demands on them to keep up with the instructional piece, but we know the behaviors and the emotional pieces are not in control. The other pieces are not going to happen.
A lot of the funding that's out here now are forcing people to collaborate, you know, and that, you know, you have to work with this particular agency to get this money. You know, and, and, and that, you know, you have to work with this particular agency to get this money. And if we have to collaborate, I mean, financially, we're going to have to be thinking of new avenues anyway because our, our base is dwindling at the state level and, and otherwise. So, I, I think we're just going to have to figure out how to collaborate with other agencies that have what we need, organizations that have what we need to further this mission for each individual child and somehow work with them.
I would like to see a, I know we have scattered summer reading programs throughout the district. I'd like to see a comprehensive summer reading district program.
Yeah, but that's part of what our libraries have.
Oh, yeah.
A very efficient reading program. And if we can, if we can refer kids that, you know, are having issues or having problems to some of those entities, you know, they're helping us and we're helping them. We all serve the same kids. The neighborhood associations, the park districts, you know, the, the city of Peoria is serving the same families. Almost all the agencies are serving the same people. Even DCFS, you know. We have the same kids that they have. But yet, we're left, you know, and trying to make them whole.
Just going back to, as we talk about strategically doing things, I think we do have to decide on the timeframe and then what we can fit into that and according, as we're talking about finances, where, you know, the state and the federal government is going. So, I would just like to propose this. We take a look at where we're at and moving forward for changes and improvement. We look at a five-year plan. So, I want to start there.
But we still have, I, I guess, here's where I'm confused, is we still have to decide where we're at on what? What are the things that we're going to look at where we're at? Where we need to be and how do we get there? That's the list, and I don't know if we're going to call them strategies, goals, or whatever. But those are the lists of things we have to come up with. And that, to me, is eventually, we're not going to be able to do all of them. And we're going to have to prioritize. That's where we get, once we come up with that list of where we're at on whatever these things are, we get public input on what their priorities are on that list of things.
But if their priorities don't fit within what the kids need, what our children need, if anybody else's priorities don't fit to get this, move this mission forward, you know, we're wasting our time.
Well, and we, and I think we said last time, anything we come up with needs to be able to be tied back to the mission. But, I mean, we have to come up with what we're going to look at. That's what we have, I mean, I've been having. And the thing of it is, I mean, I'm hearing different things, different concerns that people have, you know. And one, and I don't know how it all fits in, in a broader thing, but I know one of the things out there is safety and discipline. And, and we're not where we're at. Where are we, where are we now? Where do we need to go? But I don't know if that's a broad enough topic.
Yeah, it is, it is.
It's not a strategy. So, I'm not sure what we're looking for as strategies as, as it is things we need to look at. And then, when we decide what the things are that we want to look at, turn those into strategies? I don't know.
Even if you just call it the District 150 five-year education plan, you know, it's what we are planning for. If you're not saying, we're working primarily with strategies, whatever. But we need a plan for the next five years, where we are and where we want to go. If you don't put a timeframe or timeline on something, you won't get there. And so, I think as we say, what is it we want to do? What is it we want to do within the next five years? I think that helps to bring some things into the parameter of things.
Mr. Bateman?
Yeah, to go back to what Mr. Cloyde said earlier, and that you have, you need to start with your as-is. And that as-is starts with, where did we end with the last strategic plan? That's your report out. You know, as, as you look at what we intend to do, what we, what did we do? So, here's what was our intent, here's where we ended up. And you report out on that first. Once you have educated, informed, communicated, however you want to look at it, then you start the conversation on this list that Mr. Cloyde put together. And, and then start working at, how do you, how do you get that feedback from, from the community, from a variety of entities around, from the city council to our other areas of higher education in the area? Second thing I'd like to say is, think in terms of, and I agree, I agree with the mission. I agree with the vision. But let's turn this a little bit and from a community standpoint or from a business standpoint, how have we met the expectations, their expectations in terms of what we provided them? In terms of students that are either prepared to go to work, prepared to go to college? I understand, you know, and I agree with Dr. Latham. We're not done till every student graduates from high school in that four-year window that they normally have. And, but I add a caveat to that, and is prepared to take up their place in society. Whether that means they're ready to go into a technical aspect. And we need to start esteeming the technical roles a little bit more, I think. Because just because a person goes a technical route doesn't mean they're, they weren't able to cut it in school or to go to a higher-level school. It means they have a skill set and a knowledge and a desire to contribute to society in a way that, that they feel empowered about, they feel encouraged or, to use, you know, a euphemism, they feel jazzed about. And that, and they get excited about that. And we need people that have, you know, just because you go a technical route doesn't mean you're, you're a, you're not able to, to function at that level. Because you need to know your maths. You need to know how to run a business if you're going to be an entrepreneurial type. And you've got to have the mind and ability to be able to function at that. And then my third point, and I'm going to go ahead and get them while I get the floor, is we've heard in, I think Mr. Long will, Marine could help me here. But you're in the special needs space that ages three to five, and Dr. Latham, you've heard me get on my soapbox about this quite a bit. But ages three to five is where you normally hear your biggest ability to influence the life of a special needs child. I would challenge that it's that way for every child. And it even goes earlier than that. So, our first opportunity to see a lot of these kids is kindergarten. They're four, almost five years old anyway. You're almost out of that window. So, how, at what point can we start getting more preschool, more pre-K type stuff? And to Ms. Ross's point, there's organizations out there that are doing this. How can we partner with them to help families with skill sets to help their pre-K, you know, younger than pre-K or pre-K kids come up to speed? So, when they come in as a kindergarten, they're not well below in their skill set, but they're either at or even above skill set. And for those kids that, as they enter into the educational environment, what screening piece do we have in place to identify those kids that are, that are at risk of not completing, not making it to 12th grade? And what type of support network do we get in early in their lives and support them? Maybe it's through, through the primary years. Maybe, you know, you have to evaluate the needs of that kids over time. But maybe it, it's got to go longer from just primary into, you know, into middle school. It may be one of those where that, that student needs that type of a, a support network all the way through their senior year of high school to, to prepare them to go out and, and contribute to society. So, just a lot of, a lot of, a lot of talk going around. But, you know, just kind of three things that, as I look at it, I just want to kind of lay out.
John, you touched on what have we given the business community? What have we given the community in general in terms of the students we're producing? Towards that end, I would say we should look into, what can we do to get better feedback for what our students are doing? In, in terms of, you know, post-graduation surveys and things like that? Find out, I mean, I mean, I think, because I, I don't, I don't think the, the business community is going to give us honest feedback all the time. You know, I mean, they're going to, it's either going to be too flowery or, or too negative.
No.
But if they.
Or just negative?
No. There's, there's very specific work that's been done by ICC interviewing businesses on what the requirements are and expectations for students in the area. They've done over 200 interviews. That data is very clear. And it's very critical of District 150. And that's something we need to address and understand. We can get that information very easily. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but.
Okay, but I mean, we have not done, we have not done a good job on follow-up of students that have graduated from this district.
And that's something that we ought to have as one of the things we need to do.
Okay, because I would like, I would like to demonstrate to, I'd like to be able to demonstrate to others some of the positive things that we've done. And here, here's where our, here's where our educational efforts have translated into career success.
Yes.
You know, I mean, we, we got to be able to make that sell. The other thing I would suggest is, you know, in terms of an early recruitment tool and things, and I'm just throwing ideas there, but, ideas here. But, I mean, what are we doing to get into the parents' minds early that you reading to your child now will pay off for us big time when they walk through our doors in kindergarten? And finally, I would say, I mean, we've brought it before, but I think finding out Valeska Hinton and the effectiveness of our early childhood programs is worth looking into. I don't think we've had, we don't have really an assessment on that, right? I mean, we don't follow that?
No, we talked about longevity studies.
I know, yeah.
But we really have never done that.
We have the data, we would know the data.
Yeah.
If they were there, you know, just with the pre-K students.
And see, we were told, we've been told before, before you came.
Right, we haven't tracked them like this.
That it wasn't, that they didn't even have any way of knowing which students went to Valeska now because we didn't keep track of that.
We have those records.
I mean, starting from the very first year that they opened? Oh, but see, we haven't been using Skyward that long. Well, yeah, but Valeska's been open for.
Twenty-six years.
Twenty-six years. I mean, six years, that would give us a graduating class. That's what we were looking at several years ago. When we had the first graduating class, we started asking questions then. And in that administration, we were told they didn't keep track of that. And, and I don't know. But, I mean, I don't know if you have any of the records that transferred over from the old system.
We do.
So, maybe there is something.
Right, which is be a matter of going through each individual file and deciding what.
Yeah, the question.
And the thing is too, like, right now, we don't want to start our pre-K. We don't give up a report card. We progress rate them from state.
But, but I think one of the simplest things that people would like to know is, how many of those children who started at Valeska Hinton were successful and went all the way through and graduated from high school? I think that's one of the, the things, that's one of the simplest things that we were looking for a while back. But, I mean, I don't know if you can pull that, go back and pull that or not.
But my question would be, where would we get that information? Will we, we be looking at how to change strategies and that, that we used? Or what will, what will we do with? From this point on, I could see, but, but to go back, what would we use that for? To further the education of the children that we have now?
Exactly that, from my, I would use it to, to make sure the strategies that we use are working. And if they are not, then we need to change them. And if the peers aren't doing as well as those who went to Valeska Hinton, then how do we get, make sure that people have access to that? I mean, you hear about universal pre-K, but I'm not sold on universal pre-K until I know that universal pre-K works. I still think it's better to, I, I still think we're just.
But any, let me just say, even with the universal pre-K piece, is any level of educational, of true educational program, and because I'm, I'm not discounting what people need to do between birth to five years old.
Right.
But any level of, of formalized education before they enter to kindergarten will make a difference.
Okay.
Yes.
It will make a difference because of the vocabulary. With nothing but vocabulary, it does make a difference. But we have to also keep in mind that students arrive to us from other tracks, even if they're not at Valeska, some are in private programs that truly help. You know, not necessarily that they, they could, I mean, so they're coming from different areas. So, I, I could say it goes back to what do you really want to know? Did they graduate because they were in a pre-K program? Or were they ready for kindergarten?
That was, that was the pre-K.
Because that, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're 12th grade. Because what happens, like you said, that, that student that, Mr. Baby just said, that might need those supports all the way up. So, we just need to know, what are we looking for? Or how does that impact what we're doing moving forward?
To me, if we wanted, if we think that's an important piece, then we want to partner with those people who have the kids out in our community that are, you know, birth to whatever. Partner with them to say, and I've said this before, that every kindergarten teacher needs to say, okay, what does this child need to know when they come to me? And then we communicate that or partner with those people who have the children. Some of them don't, some kids don't even go to preschool, but a lot of our kids go to preschool. And not all of them are set up on the Common Core or the best practices and that. But, but if we partner with them, it's, it's to their advantage to have them ready to come to us. You know, so.
Part of the partnership or the, and I have to say this on behalf of staff, is, it's not the issue of not wanting to partner. It's not having the staff. Because at the end of the day, just like tonight, what was presented to you, you want to know what the data is of the students that we currently have in school. I don't have a staff member to assign to go out and to do those community part, you know, to establish those partnerships and to set that up and provide the training. We have a number of centers that want to partner with us. They want to participate in our professional development, let's say around reading, what we're doing as it relates to reading, mastering corrected reading, strategic reading. We can't afford to pay our consultants and our teachers that are out because they're working in the buildings. So, that's where the breakdown is, is we don't try and partnering. But our partners are, you know, Head Start is a prime example of a great partner. And they've participated in our language learning training. But the supports that they, additional supports they need, we can't afford to pay for.
No, well, we, we, you know, we shouldn't have to pay for it.
But they don't have to find it. I mean, in defense of them, you know, they've been cut because they are federally funded program.
Mr. Cloyde?
Just, just a couple of things. One of them is, I, I've been through strategic planning work for 30-plus years. And the process you're seeing here is sort of wallowing in the information. And about two-thirds of the process will feel like this. It feels undefined, sort of misdirected and sort of back and forth. And that's the, that's the only way you get these issues out. So, Ms. Wolfmeyer, please, this is, this is a sense of giving you comfort. I'm trying to comfort you in the fact that this is very typical of the process. So, don't, don't despair. This is, this is how it gets started. And two-thirds of the work that's going to do, be done by this, this group is going to feel this way until we get there. Number two is, I would suggest that if, if, for lack of any other resolution here, we've got at least the first eight subjects. If we do one page on those which says, here's a paragraph of what we want to accomplish and here are the metrics we can use to apply to them as a start. I will volunteer to help draft that if I get an information from other people. I'll be happy to do that with other folks.
You mean, you want each of us to do that?
You, you can or you can't. But I think at some point, we need one page for each one of these topics. It says, this is where we are, this is where we want to go. And there's a paragraph for each, and then there's, here's the metrics. And if we don't have the numbers to put to it or a metric to put to it, then we say either we can or can't measure it and we value it in some other way. And then finally, there are other organizations that have data that we can use, like ICC, that can give us input to help with that. I know they've got that information. And that can be very valuable input. So, this, this is sort of down in the weeds and some of the details, but this is how the process has to work. It, it's not pretty. And if anybody expects it to be nice and neat and orderly, if you're doing strategic planning, it's ugly until you finally come out with a project.
I'm curious as to why you didn't mention under safety and security, discipline. Is it implied in some of this discipline?
Because this was a starter. This is not, this is a start. This is a framework for discussion. This is not a final document.
Oh, okay.
This is, this is just to put some categories on the table and say, as, we are both an educational institution and we are a form of a business. And we have to, like it or not, address these issues in some fashion. Somebody is responsible for every one of these things in this district. And they are critical to accomplishing the goals that you've articulated. And we have to be able to provide all of these things, not just one or two of them. And how we get that done is what the, what the strategy is all about.
I think we have to link them back to whether or not they. I think we have to link them back to whether or not they're going to get us to where we want to go. I mean, I can see, you know, some of them getting us to where we want to go, but I don't see parent, we need to add parents under people or under something.
Well, it's under community relations and internal audiences. It's right there. Community and relations. The point is, these are just categories, but you've got to start somewhere. It can't just be talk. We've got to put something on paper at some point.
And that's the thing, is we work through this, we may decide that parent involvement has a much higher priority and needs to stand alone. We can, you know, we can, that may be what comes out of this, this whole process. And that's why we have to get into, I mean, I appreciate you saying, I think that might be a good idea for the next meeting, is for us to try and put something that, Mr. Crawford, you had a comment?
I was going, what's your?
I've got, I've got seven other points that came from this discussion that need to be added to this already.
So, I'm taking notes. I've made many suggestions tonight that I think involve people outside of the school district. So let me just go on record and say, I'm mindful that the more you make solutions and involve people you don't control, that's very difficult. So, you know, your point that you make to me later is well-taken. And so, you know, I think as we go forward, we had to, I think in a perfect world, I think it's great if everybody would just sign on and get charged up about working on behalf of District 150, but, you know, and moreover, do it from a volunteer basis, because we don't have a lot of money to be throwing around at other people to encourage them to get involved. So having said that, you know-
Well, and the thing of it is, if nothing else, it just is topics from this list, if for the next meeting, each board member could even put some priorities, prioritize some of these. Some of these are going to be more important to one person than another, and vice versa, and I think that would be a help to whittle it down or get to where we need to be also.
If I recall this discussion from last time, we had also talked about setting up some meetings now, we're going to-
Right, but that was going to be after we get this finalized, because we're going to come up with, what we decided the last time is we're going to come up with, we hoped, a list of goals, objectives, strategies, whatever we're going to call them, that we can push out to the public, so that there's some structure over the feedback they give us, but that we were going to try and go and make some presentations to groups, is what you wanted to do, wanted us, all of us, to do, not just you, but like to city council, county board, and get, and part of that is going to be, whatever these things we come up with, is to tell them where we, what we've done with that, let's just say, on career technical education. We could tell them what we've done with WCTC, what we've done, where we're at, where we hope to go.
Well, my, and just to clarify, what my idea of going to county board, city council, and other community bodies would be to share with them when we're going to be having these community meetings, so that when their constituents called them, and they said, District 150 doesn't communicate with me, they can say, no, they actually came to one of our meetings, and they talked about what their plan was for rolling out the strategic plan.
Okay.
We have people that come here all the time and tell us, you know, kind of the obvious information, but nevertheless, it's here to make an announcement for the benefit of sharing that, the real benefit is to share with the community at large, not to share it with us. You know what I mean? So that's kind of what I envision.
Okay. So what have we done for now? I'm not sure what we accomplished tonight. No, we said we were going to have it on the agenda, and we're going to, yeah. Again, I think it's another good discussion, I mean-
But the next meeting, we're going to have some preliminary dates for these meetings, because if this thing goes too long, people won't have a chance to plan at the beginning of the year.
Right. Mr. Cloyde, did you want to bring up your concern about dates?
We have an election coming up in March, and April, I think it's, April is, April's- My concern I expressed to Ms. Wolfmeyer is that it's great to have community input, but I don't think those sessions should be a chance for people to make political speeches about their candidacy instead of about the District 150 strategy. And I don't know how you fix that, but this is not necessarily for people to come in and use their time to advocate their reason for running for office. So I don't know how you deal with that, but I would say, let's think about that before we schedule these meetings.
Limit their ties. First time in history.
Well, we can certainly come up with an idea of when we want to do these, how many we want to do, and when we want to do them, where we want to do them. And we can have some ideas for that at the next meeting.
Might be helpful to have a facilitator also, because then-
I suggested that, and everybody thought I was wanting to spend some money.
No, back to what Chris said earlier, find someone who will volunteer their time. But to facilitate these meetings, that way, it'll shut off a lot of what your concerns are. Because if you get someone that starts down that path, facilitator cuts them off, so this is not the venue for that.
We have to be mindful of whether or not it's a public meeting.
Understood.
If it's a meeting of two board members, it's not a public meeting, but if it's three or more board members, there it becomes a public meeting. And then we have different rules, so.
And I don't have a problem with, I don't have a problem with the facilitator, except we've been down this road before, and you have to be careful who you get, because we got a facilitator who decided that that was their chance to sort of perform. And I didn't feel was very helpful, and, so we can put some thought into that and talk about that again at the next meeting. Okay. Okay, another good discussion, I think. Not quite sure where it went, but.
Do you want to have a deliverable out of this? In other words, next steps?
Have a what?
What's the next step? It's a deliverable. I mean, this is the process, guys. At some point, you've got to have a piece of paper that says you're going to do something.
Well, I thought that the next, the next step was going to be that we're going to have a document that we can have, that we can send our thoughts to you on these issues, and you're going to put together a sort of a document on each of these things, and we'll discuss that again, and then we will have some dates, and I think that's the next step.
So the deliverable is send Rick your thoughts.
Yep.
Is what?
That's good for me. I'll be happy to do it.
I mean, I think it's important, though, that if nothing else, we need to let you, I mean, we need to, if you want to share what your priorities are in those categories.
Yeah.
Or if you have something in your mind that's not in one of those categories, then add that category to it.
Let's just bring it together in a document that we can work from. Strategy is crafted, and this is the process of crafting strategy, and that is you build on it from time to time. You don't paint it all in one day. You work on it for several weeks or months to get it right.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Next, we have approval of minutes. We need, I need a motion and a second to approve the minutes from September 22nd of 2014 and September 29th of 2014.
So moved.
Are there any changes or corrections? Did you call the roll?
Mr. Cloyde?
Abstained because of my absence from one meeting.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kastig? Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Finalized motion here.
We are now at the presentation by audience. We're at the audience opportunity to address the board. As a reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of Education held in public, not a public meeting. It is not a question-and-answer session, and it is not a debate, so there will be no response from the horseshoe unless one of us has comments once the audience's comments are completed. Recognizing everyone's First Amendment rights, we still ask that you refrain from speaking about subjects, topics relating directly to district personnel, and also those not germane to the Board of Education's authority. We also ask that you refrain from using inappropriate language and keep a civil tone to your remarks. Please also keep in mind that just because something can be said does not necessarily mean that it should be said. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and give your name for the record. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. No one under 18 years of age may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or a teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Board members are also available by phone and/or email. This contact information is available on the district website and in the school calendars that parents receive from their school. Sharon Cruz.
No Child Left Behind succeeded in discrediting public schools. Parents fled 150 to avoid the stigma of failing schools. A significant number of students did well on the test, but neither No Child Left Behind nor you acknowledged their successes. In 2012, the board allowed Lathan to place an ad in the Puria Journal stating that in 2010, the state had declared 150 a failing district, but declaring that she had raised the bar. Dr. Lathan chose ISAT as the measuring stick for others. So doesn't she need ISAT proof to show that she significantly negated No Child Left Behind's claims that 150 is a failing district? I never believed this test should be the deciding factor, but you accepted it. Tonight, no one even acknowledged its existence. Would like the scores, please. Only in my lifetime did public education become compulsory. My father's education ended with the sixth grade, my mother's with the ninth. Until the Civil Rights Movement, many African-American children were not encouraged or sometimes allowed to go to high school. We have been given a relatively short time to catch up and to motivate young people whose grandparents were never required or allowed to dream of a high school, much less a college education. Every lesson that teachers prepare must be complex enough to challenge the highest-performing students and simple enough to make achievement for the lowest-performing students possible. Unfortunately, equal opportunity does not guarantee equal success. You have many on-site witnesses who carry tales all over the city about what is happening in District 150. The grapevine is extensive, so please stop believing that your PR efforts are working. The board and administration should direct their efforts in the two areas that should help, could help teachers do their jobs and provide students with an education comparable to their abilities. Smaller class sizes are mandatory. Obviously, 25 to 30 students cannot be, can be given little one-on-one attention. They have to learn with group instruction, usually tailored for the average. One very interesting statistic that we will never see, but about which we are all aware, is how much teaching and learning time is lost because of discipline problems. It is your job to see to it that disruptive students be removed immediately and with appropriate consequences and help so that learning can take place. That wasn't done toward the end of my career, and I believe it is even worse now. As James Rayner espouses, teachers should be given the ability to avoid instructional downtime.
Terry Napp?
Yes, good evening. I look here on your agenda, and it says, annual student achievement update. Not one word about ISAT, the thing that you should be measuring, Lathan, by. Four years should be lined out or laid out and shown to the public how the ISAT scores have improved during her administration and during her staff development. And as Ms. Cruz mentioned, Mr. whatever his name is from North Carolina, Charlotte, who's coming back in town here again after getting thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, her leadership has not produced results. That's as simple as it is. Now we're off to talk about NWEA. I want to know, as a taxpayer, what the ISAT scores were from last year. Not even going to be mentioned? That's incredible to me that not one board member brought this up and said, what is the status of the ISAT scores? The Teacher Academy, which I've talked about in front of this body before, that was in place, and the administrators were supposed to run the Teacher Academy, and it was supposed to save money on staff development funds and moving and going to colleges and make courses more relevant. This was part of the contract back 10 years ago, part of the contract. Not one course taught by any of the administrators, not one course, set up to my knowledge, by any of the administrators. And this has been talked about here, going back to Valeska Hinton, been talked about every year. I've talked about it every year, and I've told you how to do this. It doesn't take an administrator. It takes somebody working on a doctorate program that wants a research paper. Can be done very easily. Don't want to do it. Don't have any intent to do it. If Valeska Hinton is so great, why are our ISAT scores so terrible? It's pure and simple. Doesn't take a wise man to figure it out. Again, NWEA. These tests are artificially easy. I've been in places where they've discussed this, including Quest, at a board meeting at Quest, and Mr. Hooks, Hooks or whatever his name is, is on the board over there, challenged the principal for using NWEA and said it doesn't even compare, doesn't even compare to ISAT. And it doesn't. And we just sit here and patronize Lathan and her crew from North Carolina, and this guy who's going to come in here again, and he's going to give six hours of training to every teacher? He's been here three years in a row, $20,000 one year, $26,000 another year. I mean, where is his result if he's doing the staff development for this district? I had other things to talk about, including the no-hire list, which I gave you a copy of the FOIA for it, and I'll have to talk about a layer. That's where we don't hire substitutes, because we put them on the no-hire list.
My name is Dan DeGale. I'm Vice President of Change 150. Last month, we held the first of three town hall meetings. I think that it provides a great forum for dialogue between the community and engaged stakeholders and board members. I thought it went pretty well. I think if you asked me, Mr. Cloyde, Mr. Bateman, they came out last month as well, and I think that they would agree that it went pretty well as well. We didn't necessarily solve all the problems, but what we did do was we opened a dialogue and opened a communication between the district and various stakeholders, including parents, voters, et cetera, in the community. We're going to continue that dialogue this Saturday at 10:30 a.m. over at Glen Oak Christian Church. So, Mrs. Wolfmeyer, Reverend Butler, we invited you, as well as Mrs. Kostic, to participate in that communication forum with district stakeholders and your constituents in the Second District. We received your polite email declining the invitation and encouraging us to participate in the strategic planning process instead. Let me assure you that we very much look forward to participating in the strategic process, but there are a number of concerns that kind of, that really fall outside the scope of strategic planning, and the town halls are really a golden opportunity to have an open discussion with the voters who believed in you enough to put you where you are. So we'll be continuing that conversation on Saturday. We hope you join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any board members have any response to the audience presentations? I would just like to mention that, I believe it was mentioned during the presentation, that the ISAT scores come out on October 31st. We do not have them yet. They're due out on the 31st.
I would also add that the history of those scores is available on the ISBE website, and it goes back, I believe, at least three to four years. This year's is not ready, because it has not been prepared.
It's not been out yet.
It's not been released yet. All of that data is available at very detailed levels.
Okay, that brings us to information items. We have purchase orders over $2,500. Are there any questions for Mr. Wilcoxton tonight?
Just on the, there was one in there, and just for, and maybe it's a newbie question, but on there, there's a charge for a number of computers for Quest, and I just wanted to understand why we were buying computers for Quest, that's all.
And it's Title I. Once again, they're Title I funds. Their allocation is a part of District 150, and then we disperse it out. But they have to follow the same requirements as all of the district Title I schools, and so then that flows through our purchasing process. So the Title I office would actually make the purchase through technology on their behalf, and we have to actually designate that on our payments to identify that.
You will see throughout the year that there are purchases for some parochial schools also. It's the same thing. It's a Title I fund.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, report a request under the Freedom of Information Act and status of such requests?
Since our last board meeting report on September 22nd, 2014, we received five new Freedom of Information Act requests. Of these new requests, four were filled. Of these new requests, four were filled. There were eight pending requests noted on the September 22nd, 2014 board report. Six were filled. We received 115 requests for this calendar year.
Thank you. Brings us to the consent agenda. Reverend Butler, would you summarize the gifts to the school district for this meeting?
Yes, under item number one, gifts to the school district, this meeting, there is a total of 5,000, excuse me, $5,312. Included in that gift is $3,500 donated to the Knoxville Center for Student Success. So altogether, year-to-date, $15,345.18. And the proposed action regarding these gifts is that those donations that are listed be accepted and letters of appreciation be sent to the donors.
Thank you. The consent agenda tonight consists of the gifts to the school district, just summarized, payment of bills, the human resources report, the proposed action is the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, discharge of an employee, payment for travel, and number five is the authorization to sign settlement agreement and general release of claim of Jane Doe versus Hines et al., Circuit Court of Puria County, case number 13L95. The proposed action is that the District 150 Board of Education approve the minors, approve the minor settlement agreement and authorize the board president to execute the settlement agreement on behalf of the district. Could I have a, are there any items that a board member wants pulled for a separate vote off the consent agenda? Could I have a motion and a second on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments tonight? Did you call the roll?
Mr. Floyd?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Brings us to the deliberation agenda and discipline.
Okay, under revocation of board probation, the proposed action is that the revocation of board probation listed on the report dated October 14th, 2014 be approved as presented.
Move, so moved.
I moved, you seconded.
Sorry, still move.
Would you call the roll? You seconded it.
Oh, I seconded.
Mr. Floyd?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Abstain.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Five eyes, motion here.
Number seven, expulsions to be held in abeyance. The proposed action is that the expulsions to be held in abeyance, listed on the report dated October 14th, 2014, be approved as presented.
Oh, I seconded.
Would you call the roll?
Mr. Floyd?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Abstain.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Five eyes, motion here.
Number eight, expulsions. Proposed action is that the expulsions listed on the report dated October 14th, 2014 be approved as presented.
Second.
Did you call the roll?
Mr. Floyd?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Abstain.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Five eyes, motion here.
Number nine, revocation of expulsions held in abeyance. Proposed action is that the revocation of expulsions held in abeyance listed on the report dated October 14th, 2014 be approved as presented.
Second.
Did you call the roll?
Mr. Floyd?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Abstain.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Five eyes, motion here.
Students expelled by the board are referred to by number, thereby ensuring privacy. Board action concerning these students have been decided in executive session.
Thank you. Are there any presentations or suggestions by board members tonight?
Hopefully not.
Seeing none, are there any reports from board committees? Reverend Butler?
Just very quickly, the Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee did meet last month. We are scheduled to meet this Thursday at Rolling Acres at 5:00 p.m., preceding the parent-university event.
Thank you.
We have a policy committee meeting Thursday.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you very much.